Time and get. So we'll, we'll do a.
All these.
A working. That's good. Get up and work for study session.
Okay.
So we'll get started with chamber report. We've got Troy.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear? All right. Yes, I can hear you great. Thank you. And I thank you, Selby, for responding. I clearly made it on time. I drove six hours today for a five hour meeting. So it's been a whirlwind, but I'm going to give you now my little update. First off, I want to talk about footfalls. We have the April is done. Looking at number four here, April 2021, we counted 650,000 footfalls last year, 621, and this year, 657. So we're just a little bit up from footfalls over the previous year. I also want to show, we just had a really great Mayfest. And looking at May so far, you can see what Mayfest does for a Saturday in May, with May 4th being a lovely weekend, beautiful weather. But just felt like dang on May 11th, it felt like summer started officially. Lines of cars coming through town with RVs, but busy, busy day. On that day, just a little bit less than the previous year by about 7,000 footfalls, but still pretty consistent. And moving on, this is a handsome overload, I know, but just wanted to thank our city Travis and Carl for being in our festug at Mayfest this past weekend. This was us in the parade, in the grand march. Things went really well. It's just, I don't, just a wonderful day. It was just magical. It really was. Everything went off without a hitch. And thanks again, Public Works for helping us get the maypole up. So appreciate that. And then we also had the My Blooming Laugh. We partnered with Ted Driven to take over the, the race. And they did a bang up job, added more people. Last year, we were able to raise $3,500 for Cascade Medical Foundation. This year with Ted Driven and expanding it to be not only a 5K, but also a 10K and a half marathon. They raised $5,000 for Cascade Medical Foundation. So great news there. And then finally, my last update is our hut is officially in place. We have repurposed and purchased the Lions Club Chestnut Hut, as they are not going to be doing that anymore. And it is now our visitor booth down in near the maypole. So we're going to have this open on weekends, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. More days if we can get additional volunteers to help us out, but we'll have this open down at the park, able to answer any questions and take a load off a lot of people and retailers downtown as well as Art in the Park. The carriage drivers, all the people that get asked tons of visitor questions on the daily basis. And so that is really all I had for you today, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to point out the weekend before, May 4th and 5th, it actually rained all.
Yeah.
Oh, did it? Oh, I thought it was not. Okay, thank you. I thought it was nice.
I know, because I work outside.
Oh, it was so bad.
I wasn't going to say anything. Way to go. All right. Well, thank you. You have anything to add?
Just here for moral support.
Moral support.
All right.
You can take your morals and go.
Bye, Kevin.
Do we have power to citizen? I jaywalked. We crossed the street at the same time. I was waiting for the light. It's like, oh.
Sounds like a lot of tattling.
Yeah. Too much tattling.
Doesn't our state also not have a jaywalking like?
What?
I don't think our state allows for, like pedestrians have full right of way in our state.
Hmm, okay.
Okay. Even though we overthink.
There was never any jaywalking back in the olden days. Did they change that?
There was never any jaywalking.
No, you couldn't jaywalk. You had to walk across.
I don't.
Because I always followed the rules.
Yeah. Well, I'm working that no one follows the rules.
All right, we're moving on to our river recreation.
It's still illegal in Washington State.
It's illegal?
Still illegal in Washington State.
I think they did try to do.
Get them. But we have bigger fish to grab.
Yeah. Yes.
So Erin. You're up.
Yes, thank you. May I borrow your pen?
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Can I suggest one thing right off the bat? That picture is so old. There should be one that's more up to date with all the people that are actually there. That thing was at least 2020.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Well, it shows a false picture.
Like during COVID when no one was here.
Yeah.
If anyone stand in front of my counter.
No, it'll be.
It'll be, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to give the whole, whole meal deal of the river recreation and planning effort which has been going on over the last three years or so. I know probably a lot of you have gone through this over the years, but we, we have our finished product and so we, the, the last step or where we're at in the process now is to learn about you folks. So I'll introduce myself. I'm Erin McDavid, Shiloh County Natural Resources Department. I worked on this plan over the years with Jennifer Hottersberger from Winachti Valley Planning, who she also used to work for the county, so we were coworkers then, but. And then multiple other people in the room were also on the planning group and worked on this for a long time. So. So just to, to launch right in. First of all, just making sure everyone's clear on stuff of where we're talking about. So this is the Levenworth area where the Recreation Management Plan. And it, it covers the Icicle River, basically from the Fish Battery to the Confluence with the Winachti. It's across from Wal Forest and then the Winachti River from Icicle, we call it COIC Bridge, has a north conservation bridge. Down to the Barn Beach and East Lethem. So that is the area that question. Also, I'll just point out that of the main put in and takeout sites. Three of them are owned by the city of Levenworth, the, the area right by the COIC Bridge, City of City, Tropicana, both the commercial operators and their public put in, both Winachti. And then Barn Beach and East Lethem Boat Ramp above City above also. The other main put in is the Battery of Winachti. So bringing it back to 2020, and this, this all got started, I, I believe it came about because the county commissioner is giving phone calls from concerned residents to at the level of recreation that was at name and perceived issues with trash and trespassing. Variety of things. So that got the natural resources department involved and then the city of Levenworth is also interested in getting my communication that was going on. So we started with a river recreation study. And that study entailed visual observations on weekends and a couple of weekdays to actually count numbers of people who were using the river and observe the other, the other plant leaders. And then it was also included a survey that was sent out to all of the residents of the Levenworth area. And I'll talk more about that survey later, but so that was our, our gathering of information phase. And 2020 was a weird year, obviously, and you know, we were kind of concerned about speed results, but then saw that actually it was quite busy that year in Levenworth. And the, I, I think that while the use may have been a little bit higher than normal that year because everyone's, you know, doing outdoor activity here, it was, I think, a four patch. So in our gathering, gathering information phase, we wanted to create a four working group. So this is a, a group of local citizens, agency folks, Chamber of Commerce, City of Levenworth. And folks which are in the game and make sure we're bouncing everything off, off this group, documenting the current conditions. So that was the observing the river use. And analyzing the recreation, basically this data analysis of all the observations, documenting it in your report and then understanding that you need considerations or concerns, not just the point of the survey. So the numbers were. Use was counted for seven hours per day, over eight different days of the summer. Like I said, it was on weekends and weekdays. We collected information on whether it was commercial use or private use or type of watercraft, whether there's PNA, dogs, anger, some music. And then on average, there were 1,130 people who were isolated free on a typical weekend day. And on average, commercial use that was documented was 30% of the river, 34% of the river users on Icicle. And on average, on the Winachti River, there are 1,552 people going on a typical weekend day. The use is higher in August on Winachti because the Icicle gets low, so the use time shifts from Icicle to Winachti. So we focused on Icicle in July and did observations on Winachti in August. And on the Winachti, on the average, commercial use was 50% of the river users. So a little bit higher than. And then the survey, there were almost 800 responses to the survey, which is a very robust response per survey. 90% identified as local landowners. 41% living and existing to the river. So obviously there was a lot of purchase safety in the survey. People, we also mailed out deeper problems to every single vessel that was right along the river just to make sure that people had a chance to, those landowners have still, still. 92% of survey responded said they had some concerns about the river in the study area. And the most common concerns that were cited were garbage and public behavior across the board for all the sites. We broke down the survey so people could respond. You know, it uses different at different sites, so people could respond per site, but across board, garbage and public behavior. And then they vary, the third highest concern varied across the different areas. So Icicle Road Bridge, the COIC Bridge is parking. The end of Wilson Street, which is private, that was bathrooms, really the main use there is commercial. Commercial use. Enchanted car, bay burning. And the hatchery boat ranch bathrooms. The end of the towns for road, formerly Old Bridge Road, not a super common place to put in except maybe once the fish hatchings blow. Access bathrooms, East Levenworth Road Bridge, again, not a super common use, but parking, there's no parking there. Shore Street, parking, parking surrounded. And East Levenworth Boat Ramp bathrooms and above Farm Beach, the parking area above Farm Beach, parking. So all the limitations in parking, not a lot of government infrastructure at the high use river sites. And then environmental concerns, but they grew. And then a few other things that just kind of pulled from the comics or from the write-in comments on the survey. Traffic safety, both the amount and speed of commercial shuttles, so that vans are driving, if we're crazy around. And parking on the shoulder of a road. And there's a photo of what it looked like, though, you know. Until recently has looked like where there's full, full of cars on the shoulder, people have to kind of walk in the, the lanes to get around them. There's bicycles, there's traffic. It turns into a very congested. Highlands and safety in the river. So just kind of some overall safety concerns. And then the old dam infrastructure that creates some strainer type of, of fix of things in the river channel itself. Public inebriation, which kind of goes along with that public behavior, but specifically around alcohol. Lack of signage, basically just kind of general lack of information at the put-ins and takeouts, noise, mostly music, trespassing on private property, bank erosion, wildlife phasing. Those were kind of the main themes that we got that survey. So since then, that was 2020, I think the, the survey results were actually completed in 2021. And since then, we've kind of just been trying to do, address things as, as they arise. And so there's been some progress on river recreation that I've been piecing up progress, kind of just tackling, you know, one thing here, one thing there. We, we have kept up, well, we were keeping up with meeting with the River Recreation Group to come up to discuss the issues and things that we wanted to work on. But a couple of other things that have happened since 2020, the River Ambassador Program, this choice thing through the Chamber of Commerce. It's a great program. I'm not going to go in depth in that, but it basically has people, volunteers posted at the main put-in, also in takeouts on weekends. And they're able to provide information to our river users, help garbage and a lot of other things that they might not necessarily have signed up for, but. It's, it has been greatly successful and they've kept it up over consecutive years and hopefully that keeps on happening. It's been probably the best thing that's happened on the river so far. And a river shuttle was available through one of the, the commercial groups, but it was, it was kind of an informal river shuttle. It was free and it was just as needed. So that, that could help people get, you know, help. The idea with the river shuttle is so people don't have to park at congested parking areas and they, they know they can catch right back to the river park. So that was, that was an option. The River Safety Working Group was kind of a spinoff of the River Recreation Group, but it was specifically to address safety issues. And we had the Sheriff's Office, the fire districts. Kind of a variety of people involved in that with the specific focus on how do we address some of these safety issues? Especially around high water early season when people are getting on the river without knowing that it's cold and swift and then not being able to get out, take out. And there was a really unfortunate situation eight years ago where. The water came up, it, it, the flow came up and they locked, they stayed up for a long time and it overlapped with River Recreation. It didn't start to get hot. People were still floating. The river was still at 6, 7,000 CFS and then multiple holidays. So some things that the River Safety Working Group did was to develop some new signage for the takeouts. And there, there's a warning sign that's at the Blackford Island Channel, says get ready to take out, so be coming out Sunday. And then there's some bigger red signs. Place that both the Barn Beach. One on the inside, anyway, at the boat ramp, on the boat ramp. Uh, so. That was the Sheriff's Office that installed those as part of the rescue training, the city of Levenworth gave the signs to be made. And electronic rearboards have also been installed at the river, at the fish battery. Most people put in there early in season. So when the water is high, there's an upfront rearboard where people see it, right? It's everybody full of water. No one to get out, you know, just manage it that nice and cross. And the life jacket stations. That was something Cascade Medical has been, been doing it and the fish battery has been involved in. So basically there's free life jackets at hood and some of the high use sites. So. We went through feasibility of the mill game site rehabilitation and recreation feature project, which kind of didn't go forward other than there's still interest in. Doing some rehabilitation, including that of the old mill dam site to remove some of the hazardous materials that are still part of that revitalized. So. And then at that point, it was really, the need was identified to complete an actual process. So instead of giving us feedback, we have a full suite of prioritized, you know, recommendations. We can use that to then move forward in the future in intentional way. So we were able to work with some funding from the city of Levenworth and Shiloh County Land Tax to split the cost to do this next effort, which was the River Recreation Management Plan. And so that took place pretty much over the year last year in 2023 and. I'll go into what came out of that. So this is kind of phase two. So the first phase is information gathering phase, and then this was the, the planning. Phase. So again, we needed to start by engaging the public and the four working groups to take this off. And then the goal was to identify positive management actions. So. Yeah. But we needed to identify some information gaps and learn how to make good information mean. The overall goals for managing that the group determined were to identify and develop possible infrastructure improvement projects to address the issues that were identified in the 2020 survey at the put-in and takeouts. And then also to identify responsible parties and possible pathways towards addressing those issues. And with the goals, with the additional goals of maintaining and cleansing habitats to ensure continued survival of wild salmon runs, reduce impacts by river recreation users on right-handing compounds, and I'll also add on private property owners, being contained in the river. And maintain the river system's value, the habitat, the wild species and the response for food and survival. So that touches well on the environmental concerns. The infrastructure part touches on the other issues that the, the tickets. So to engage the public during this process, we started it off at, in May of last year at the community engagement night where Jennifer and I had a table and we just. We basically had some, some, a, a range of possible management actions that we wanted to get input on early on. So we kind of like test the waters and see, see how people felt about some of these possible, you know, recommendations. And some of those actually included limiting use on whatever, utilizing recreation fee or pass system, infrastructure improvements and outreach efforts. So just, yeah, just kind of like I said, testing the waters, seeing, seeing what people, the general public thought about these things and just chatting with people about this upcoming plan. So then over that summer was when we, we saw some Jamaican happen and we worked with the Recreation River Recreation Group and developed this draft management plan. And then in November, there was another community engagement night where we had a table. Again, we had our, our draft set of recommendations. So we were able to get input on those and we also instituted a two week conference about them. So we got some answers at the engagement night. We also circulated the draft plan and got some big. Okay, so what is in the plan? So the, the recommendations are all developed to kind of recommend and address those issues that came up in the 2020 survey and. And worked by the River Recreation Group. So. This is kind of, I'm just going to high level go over the management recreation, sorry, management recommendations. But we didn't get any more detail on that. So first of all, garbage collection facilities can be better. We could have better garbage collection. There, and there's kind of some notes on each one. There are several initiatives that provide garbage services. So it could be an increase in, in those services. Another thing that can help address, that would be a possible ordinance banning the use of disposable beverage containers on the river to reduce garbage. That is a thing in some other areas that had a lot of river recreation. That was another thing that we did during this process was research with a bunch of other towns that have rivers with high, you know. Summer, low water, river recreation to kind of compare and see what other, what other areas have done. Education, outreach efforts by the River Ambassador will hopefully continue. But in addition to that, a river recreation manager can be hired to help develop educational information on how to filter river here in Levenworth. The information can be shared online at River Access Kiosks and as part of a possible registration pass. And if funds were available, river majors can be hired for season weekends to be actually on the river, helping provide information. Doing some outreach on the river as well. And this, I'll get, get back to that. The city and or county could draft an ordinance or equivalent process that requires a registration pass for using the schooly entry exits in order to generate funds for River Recreation Action. So if, if there is a desire to have a more robust management system and generate funds for infrastructure improvements and, and all of these things. One option would be to charge people money and generate revenue to support a more robust river recreation program. As of now, the commercial users pay titles?
40.
450 per person, or I should say that commercial operators pay the city $4 cents per person that they put on the river. And that goes into the general Levenworth fund, but it does provide funding that, that could be used to do some of these things as well. I think last year that, that revenue was around $90,000.
From one operator.
From one operator. So that's significant. We crunched some numbers. If at the current use levels, if everybody paid $5 fee for utilizing the river, that would generate about $400,000 of revenue. And ordinance could also include a ban on saying to use it on the river in order to reduce noise for neighbors and wildlife. And then again, a ban to dispose, a ban on disposable beverage containers to reduce garbage and alcohol consumption. Maybe it's. We don't know if it's illegal to drink alcohol in public. There, I, I think. It would be pretty hard to stop people from drinking on the river. And I don't think that's what we want to do, but. Then disposable containers would likely greatly reduce that or at least have a non-controlled approach to it. So it'd be kind of a. A double sided.
Of course.
And then considering on more permanent restroom facilities could be added near the Barn Beach parking area. An engineering study would likely be needed to evaluate feasibility since those sites are often close to water. But we could also prioritize more permanent restroom facilities at other River Access sites in addition to Barn Beach, such as East Levenworth Boat Ramp. Those are both fortified currently and there is, I believe there are at the COIC Bridge as well, but we'll be at that more. More permanent facilities is an option. Environmentally speaking, a seasonal closure on Icicle at the end of July, a seasonal closure to loading the river. At the end of July would minimize impacts to steelhead caused by river users floating on the creek. So basically, we did bring in. Agency folks from the Fish Wildlife Service and from the EDFW to, to give us input on what they think that the impacts that the river creation needs are on these endangered fish species. And their response was basically like, the recreation use not happening during spawning season, so it's not directly impacting these, the spawning of these fish. However, when the flows get really low and the water gets really warm, those, the fish especially should not get stressed overly easily. So the. The puppies and people walking, you know, on the, the river bottom because it's too low to challenge to float through, through sections does stress the fish in Icicle. So a seasonal closure would minimize those impacts. It wouldn't be a closure of all use on Icicle. It'd just be a closure of loading through. So, you know, swimming, like going to a spot and swimming would still be allowed. And that would also help with the. Um, that would also help with the, uh, the ice pole gets really slow when it gets really low. And then people end up being on the river for four or five hours and then I increases. Call it, or sorry, private property trespass as people need to get off the river and do their thing or just. On the river for way longer than they thought they would be. So that, that's just my additions. Uh, currently, the, the, um. The fish hatchery boat ramp does close around the end of July. So that greatly reduces the amount of floating through traffic that happens anyway. But people will still go to the WDFW access point that's lower down on Ice Pole or Shore Street or other. Places to still float. So the idea there would be just, uh, no more floating after the end of July. Uh, water quality data could be collected and I feel free to evaluate the environmental impacts of, of use. Um, we had talked with some folks from USGS. And Department of Ecology on what kinds of studies you could do. Um. I think the main concern would be the turbidity caused by people walking on the river bottom. So we, we started some conversations about that. We should be continuing. Parking. A conceptual site plan could be developed to address bait erosion and improve parking at the current COIC bridge. Very small parking area. It's very congested and there's a lot of, uh, bait erosion that's happening there. So that, that whole area that. Be looked at in terms of infrastructure upgrades to. Harbin, basically Harbin and Access Point and restore some of the right car needed there. Um, on the road itself, the county has installed no health signs in Ice Pole right away. Um, we, we kind of gone back and forth with the, uh, county public works and the commissioners on that, um. Because they, they basically were resisting to enforce that until we provided some other option for them. Um, so some of these, these ideas do, that is the goal, is to try to provide options so that they can. Enforce, enforce a no parking on Ice Pole Road. I think part of, I think that, that also, um. Is related to the adventure part. I think, uh, there, there's a no parking, uh, along Ice Pole Road. Element to that. So right now is the time to, to really put in front of that as a thing. Not our, in the right way. Um, signs could be placed more frequently in order to be effective at, at enforcing that. The city could also work with the golf course to add parking in the lower parking lot as part of the golf course base negotiations. So that could be an alternative parking place near that Ice Pole Bridge foot in. Um, and Eastland and North Boat Range parking lots, the improvements would also be a priority. And then finally, the city and county could work with Lee and or Leavenworth Taxi to add river shuttle capacity. So that's, that's a major solution to park in the city there. If people can park at. The Eastland Boat Ramp where there's lanes, parking, take a shuttle to the top and float down. Or find, you know, park at the golf course. Float down and take a shuttle back. It, it would just really help with, with a lot of privacy issues. But also would need to be a shuttle desk advertised and people know how often it comes so they can probably have their trips around it. Uh, so, and then finding new safety, uh, all partners will work, will continue to work together to educate public about river safety, any alcohol use. Use of flight jackets, um, continue to monitor and adapt the signage to see what's working, what's not working. Uh, and the high flow alerts, those reader boards. Uh, and then review or continue to work on removing the hazardous, uh, infrastructure from the channel, those things that stick up in. People. So that's the main sweep of recommendations that's in the plan. And I say recommendations, these are, are things that we collectively came up with, that ran across the public, got a couple of comments on. Um, they're not, this, this plan is just, just that. It's a recommended strategy. So these are things. Within that plan that can be, you know, worked on and, uh, kind of just provides a framework. It's not necessarily a, if we adopt this plan and how to implement all of these things. It's, it's, it's just a, a guideline. Um, so the next steps for this, um. Plan approval by a city council and board of the county commissioners. And I don't really know what level of. Approval or what that looks like. So I would just look to you guys to, to decide what, what that level is, but. Like I said, since it is a guiding document, um, I don't know if it needs like formal adoption or just approval. At this point, it is sufficient and then knowing that each. Implementation action would then go through, you know, city council. Prior to being implemented. So it would, you know, have, have that layer. Of approval for each action, like the ordinances or like putting money towards a river recreational manager, but things like. That I would assume that those things should be go through. With approval come for the call. Um, and strategically to assign liberate recreation management duties and funding to a staff person to do the planning, coordination and implementation efforts of this. Uh, so basically, there's a lot of work that went into this. If not earning jobs, we just weren't able to, to. Come to the table and, and do it, but to really make progress on this and really address some issues and be effective at planning and implementing. These things and actually take the, the reins of, of managing the, the competitive life. River usage here, it needs a person to do it. Um, so figuring out what that, that looks like and where that person resides in terms of. Is it a county person? Is it a city person? Um, how is that position funded? That, that's strategically need to be figured out really for any of this to, to move forward. Um, we can do little things, but we can't do it all. So. And then short-term priority is something we're continuing to work with. This was. Something we can do is the River Shuttle. Uh, so we didn't, we went linked, uh, last year. And it, it was a good meeting. There was interest, but they're basically not ready to go forward with it at this time. They need some feasibility and. So that was kind of a. Oh, just a pause bit on that. But, um, this spring we did contact Leavenworth Taxi. We made do have the ability to, to provide a, a fourteen person. Bus that could run a shuttle on Eastland and North Ice Pole Ridge to the, to the takeouts. We got, I think, the cost estimate from them. It was really doing weekends from Fourth of July to Labor Day. Um, it was about twelve hundred dollars per day. I can't remember how many days. I was looking for the notes.
Twenty-three days.
Twenty-three days.
Twenty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty dollars total.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Eighty. Let's call it thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah. So anyway, that's something we'd like to propose, um, to implement this year. It's, it's ready to go. Should be that be something that we'd be able to have a schedule for, get outreach about and at least, you know, make some progress on parking. Issue with, um, you know, Gus, if that's a, something we can go forward with, that's a win for River Recreation Management, but that's going to explain. One part. So. Um, yeah, and then just going back to that river, that river recreation management, um. Strategy, I think we should put some thought into whether some of that funding from. More police operators. I know it's just absorbed into the, the city budget, but if. Unfortunately, that can go towards funding, of course, maybe to work on these issues. If that would be a worthwhile investment, um. And that should be matched, you know, hopefully by some county funding as well. Um. So, yeah, just wanted to throw that out there and have hopefully more discussions about what that could look like. In the future. There are a lot of grant opportunities. Um, so I, I don't think that we would necessarily need to rely on that. That income or that revenue for all the capital improvements and, uh, infrastructure improvements because there are, are CO grants. Um, there's a variety of different grant funding sources that can, uh, that can pay for stuff like that, but you still need a person to. Know what those projects are, develop the projects and then write the draft proposals and then manage the grants. So, um, so I think just having that person would help, you know, snowball. When you're finding that part exists into more. So. That's all.
Question.
Aaron, um, were there any communities out there that you spoke with that had a, a river use permit, like a day use permit? And how exactly did that work for them? Like, how hard was it for them to, to control, you know, the permitting and, you know?
Yeah, there were a couple of different, I look at Grove when she was part of all of this and she helped do some of these. There are a couple of different ones that I can think of off the top of my head. There's one River in Texas, almost similar Lays and River situation. But really high levels of use and I think they're charged like a couple of dollars to go out for the.
Per day.
Yeah, and that seems like it works really well. And then there was one that was more of a wild and scenic. Uh, situation more of a like, not as much for urban river, but that had a permit requirement and that permit had. Cost money. So that was kind of more of a form of like, a permit that you need to go to the enchantments. So it seemed like those, what, well, I mean, it, and there, there are different ways you could implement. Um, what, one suggestion that we had in here was to have either a day pass. So like. For example, we put some money or some dollars out there, but it's just, you know, up for discussion, but like, for example, five dollars. For a day pass to float the river. And that would capture pretty much all the tourists that come there, you float one, you know, do like one day. Or there could be an annual pass that's like ten, ten to twenty dollars. So. You're local, you'd buy that and then you'd go as much as you want, but you're not paying that like five dollars every time you go. It could be an app, um, it could be, uh. Station outside the putting, um, that's for that river recreation manager person to figure out. But one, one thing about that system, which would be an added benefit is that. If you've had people, um, checking in and basically registering, you can also have the, the requirements of the river. Or like read this before you go on the river. And that would provide people with information that the, the non-commercial users are not getting. They're doing on the river without really knowing where to get off, um, without really knowing the rules and etiquette of the river. And so whether or not people would thoroughly read the, the rules of the river before they get on, at least they'd be exposed to that information. It'd be one touch point for people to get that. Even if it was a free system, you could still require people to. Register. You'd get river counts, you know, you'd get that. That ability to provide information to people like that.
Ian, um. Couple of questions. Uh, I keep forgetting what the R O W is.
Right away.
Right away.
Public horse right away.
Uh, by the way, that was just a phenomenally excellent, deep thorough report. So I just wanted to. Thank you and your team for making that happen because that wasn't easy to do. Played a little full part, just participated, but you guys can get all the heavy lifting in. That is really some great information. So, um. I'm interested. So right now, commercial folks, they're charged, uh, they pay the city four dollars for his quarter.
Four fifty, four fifty.
Three dollars per rafter, four fifty for a stand up out of border kayaker or two.
Okay. And that, that generates out of all that, when the commercial folks that generates ninety thousand?
Roughly ninety thousand, which goes into the general fund because a lot of fees move to the general fund and that's what helps support our purse budget.
Yeah, okay. And we're saying that if they had to charge each person floater or whatever, five dollars, we would generate. If all the commercial folks did that, or just everybody would have to do that.
If the non-commercial, in addition to the commercial, did that. The commercial are already good. So if everyone else did, it would be, you know, based on the members who had twenty-five. Four hundred thousand.
Okay.
I mean, not every person that floats is in it. You're gonna have the people.
Right, right.
Fly or whatever, but generally.
Tag them somewhere on the entry points and you're gonna get a, a high percentage of the floaters that way. Okay.
Yeah, and there was some discussion of, well, how do you charge people for floating the river? It's a natural public resource. Um, that's where the fee would be raised in city infrastructure.
For what?
Using city, if property, city infrastructure for.
Putting in and taking out of the city or.
Sounds like herding cats. So, you know, who owns the river? State of Washington?
Yes.
Or, okay. And they don't care whether you charge or not for people to get on the river?
Well, again, that's why I don't, I don't think we could decide to charge for people using the river floating on the waters.
Get on it.
But just getting on.
Get on it, yeah. Cause if you get on it or using parking or, you know, they're using city.
Say you're fly fishing in Montana and you're going through a ranch and he's standing there with a shotgun and said, don't step off the water. You can fish, you can stand in front of the guy and just fish all day. The second you step off the water, you're trespassing. So you have to go through one access. So that's the point is the access. We can charge for that.
So how many total accesses, um, are there that are either city, county? Something that aren't private or nothing at all?
Um, well, they're all either private, they're sorry, um.
The cities put in at the bridge?
Yeah.
If the cities take out at Eastland and North Road and across the river at Waterfront Park. So those are the three assets that the city has that people utilize to get on and off the.
There's also private ones that.
Did you say?
Into Shore Street.
That's city.
Yeah.
One in each.
Yeah.
And across at the.
At the bow launch.
Yeah. And then people put on at the fish hatchery, which is federal.
And Shore Street is private. There's the.
The fish wildlife. Yeah, and so W success.
So there are other places that we don't control. So that's the.
But the county.
That's the, um. Dilemma, if you would, is do you just push them to other places basically?
Um, how much is commercial and how much is private? The bulk of it, paying, you know, it's a lot of dollars if they come in. Cover other expenses to monitor them.
So if it's per person, it's not age, like seniors get a discount, little kids are free, under five or. We could be doing that.
It's either, yes, it would be basically just per person, uh, either a one-time option or a. Year, you know, full season. And I mean, I think there's still room for discussion here where it's not a setting stone. Like this is what it. I think just the idea is if we want to generate some revenue for maintaining the, the, the infrastructure and all the other things we just talked about. That is an option for the whole payment.
Well, I think that the five bucks, we just, you know, that might change, but just saying that, you know, that's five bucks. Come on, what? And then fact that you could lessen the impact on the fish. I think there's something really critical to consider. I mean, you just can't, you just can't let this keep going and put that.
Right.
Put the habitats in danger like that. It's just nuts. So. Yeah, it's a free river, but, um, you pay to get the enchantments. Uh, you have an impact on the private land of users. I mean, that's all huge factors that. I think five dollars or whatever we charge is definitely justified. Just plain simple.
They work with the hotels and they're gonna have access to buy those permits all around. Make it very easy for people to buy the permits and, yeah.
Yeah, it's, so it just has to be, and I really get to what you're saying about a river management person. That's essential. That's gotta happen, that.
Yeah, it can't be done without that. Like it can't be done right or thoughtfully or, you know, it's all of us are. Doing all the other things.
So with that, I have a question. We, we give another question?
I was gonna say, so possibly is it the last thing? That, that position could, it would be funded by the county and the city. Right, you know.
Right.
That's what we're talking about.
Right. Good. No, that's all I, go ahead.
Yeah, so yeah, so Shalane D and R, how many people are on your team? A, and then B, how many focus on Leavenworth rivers and estuaries running?
Uh, we have about twelve people and of those, the people who, who's on river recreation.
So you, you've given us such a big packet. I have a lot of what they, I really dug into this and. And you, you probably don't remember, we spoke, um, on engagement nights and I said, I'm the, I'm the ban alcohol. You you probably don't remember, we spoke, um, on engagement nights and I said, I'm the, I'm the ban alcohol and it's, it made it, but it was. That written, so I love it written to you. Um, and it's kind of been down, it's been down in some communities. So. Shalane D and R started making a list when you're like, it's over, you know, infrastructure, garbage collection, removing hazards. River rangers, water, I mean, all these things are just kind of, you're the idea people and we do it because you, it seems like you, you didn't miss anything over since twenty twenty. It's like anything except for the air above, you guys have thought about and that's your, that's your charge, right? So that's what I'm trying to figure out. It's a lot and. I was at Barn Beach, thirty minutes with my daughter, thirty minutes before it was exposure that that woman passed away and that there's been a couple of deaths. So and she worked at Gingerman Factory and there was a couple of kids that saw it. It was pretty, pretty, pretty terrible. And there's been other deaths. So not to ask, to really get into how many deaths there were past couple of years, but in your packet. It's, it's hard to me when I see, you know, it's, if you go anywhere, it's, it's the old phrase of safety first, right? It's literally a thing. Safety is like the last, it's the last bullet point on your slide. Safety is the last bullet point in your plan. And seventy percent of deaths, you know, are alcohol related to adolescents and adults. Eighty-three percent P F Ds, which Bravo on the P F Ds that, you know, I lived right behind Barn Beach. So. It's amazing. That was, that was genius, a stroke of genius who would come up with that. I love seeing him. I love seeing him. There and then moved and been missing and used, right? So you've addressed that safe, that's a part of the safety is really like alcohol and K F Ds. This, these are the big ones, right? And I. It wasn't talked about a lot or enough, the alcohol thing in a scheme of things. Like, I'm not sure how many people died of park congestion. I understand, I'm not, I'm trying to minimize it. I'm trying to set this big like. River safety, talking about the pool and and safety and the kids learning to swim and. There's, we're working on that. We need to get that squared away. Um, it's just concerning. It's just, there's so much going on. You got so many, so much. You say one person, a river manager here, it's like. Bit, you've got this huge thing. Maybe it's, maybe it's a twenty-five year plan. I didn't see how long it was, but it's like, there's so many great things and literally there's, everything is great. The safety was just last. That was a little disenchantment. It was like safety last.
Yeah, um, I mean, it, this was really driven by what we heard from the community.
These are stats though, that's a digital community, that's hot. I hear that, I hear you're saying, but you, you're quoting like parts. This is real, not somebody's idea. Oh, yeah, it's really noisy, subjective, like this death, seventy percent alcohol. Like, we say, you know, and you said, just kind of brushing it off, but I'm not saying it's a big thing. And it's, it's not a part of your pro, your plan really, but. Say, oh, it's not really feasible necessarily. You'd shut it down, be like, yeah, you know, no alcohol is kind of like, not really a thing yet. And I get that, but. But being short sighted and not, you know, I think I mentioned you maybe like, working with the brewer of beer town, get a free beer. It's a chamber commerce play. I, there's. By saying, oh, like banning alcohol is like, I just don't want to see it shut down. And it's, it's just, you, you gave me the stats.
The thing of it is though, Travis, is that we gotta remember it's. What you say is gonna be limited by what you can enforce.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the big thing. That's why you're talking about one is without, without us charging. Most of this goes by the wayside because that's what's gonna generate money to put somebody on the river to do some enforcement to be able to look at, you know, what's.
Play meeting, all of these, all of these things and even one person, you have one person, I, I, I'm just. I'm not, I understand what you're saying, enforcement and that comes up a lot, a lot of our stuff. I get it. It's more a small town than I.
And the safety, I, I would disagree with just because it's the last on the list. It's the first thing that we. Started addressing with those river ambassadors and those things that we can get the education out there as to what you do to protect yourself. On that river. So it, it's, it's been. The thing that we can do before we generate money and and have started to do. So I. I would take exception that that somehow has been minimized in this.
What is the P S A, what's been the P S A of alcohol? To protect it from drinking and drowning. P F Ds, I brought, it was G, like you, you nailed it. And P F D awareness. I just don't, I hear what you're saying. I, I do. Um, I'm sorry to get hard up about it.
Can I make a, uh, so, yeah, if this river recreation person would be one person, but they could facilitate these other groups that are focus groups. Like I said, there is the river recreation, river safety group that was kind of a side group of this river recreation. Because it was recognized that there was a real need to pull any other members of the community who are more responsible for safety, the search and rescue, that. You know, getting the messaging out like the sheriff's office. So that person could be the one that. Keeps pulling that group together because it does need someone to pull that group together. I mean, it was me for a while. It's like. You know, that it, that was fine, but it, it. Just having a person who is that part of their job would ensure that that needs to be addressed and that those other members of the community who are kind of aren't experts in that subject. They can use to say, engaged.
Yeah. So it's. Your management, like just to kind of wrap my, my thing up. Management plan is you've, you've, you've listened since two thousand twenty to the community, you've assessed that, you've looked at other. Piled on some other concerns that the D N R has itself that are, the community may not be aware of with some of the rehabilitation and. The skillhead for sure, people, and I've got a friend on Shore Street and she'll yell at people if they're walking on the rocks, like, I get that, but not many, not many people do, but. So you've got this management plan that we, you're wanna help, we wanna help fund that with the county and get someone in play for let, for our area, right? Is that what we're really talking about? And the community and our committees and and people kind of under them to band together to start bolstering this. Right now, now the time, right? You created this thing and then you outlined it. That's, we're now moving it forward with implementing some sort of plan, getting funding, right?
Yeah, and the, the, to speak to the banning alcohol thing, um, you know, there, all the options have been on the table. I think what we tried to. Do here is to hit a middle ground because, you know, there's comments still on either side of. Like, you know, one of the options was limiting, it's actually like limiting the number of people who go down the river. That would also address a lot of these issues, but that's a hard line stance to take. That would require pretty advanced. Like environmental assessment and like things to back up.
Enforcement.
That's what I'm telling that. So I think we're just trying to strike. A middle ground here that people can get on board with.
Yeah.
And if you have someone, you know. Uh, yeah.
It's, it's gonna go, and the alcohol aside, and alcohol, again, alcohol gets. Uh, look, I like alcohol and that's great for moderation, right? Or whatever your deal is, but that's where the music gets turned up a little louder. Go to the bathroom more. You don't think you're on somebody's property urinating and these things, and these are things and you're, and these are concerns that I've talked to. People live and it's got that properties or they've been there for several generations. It's, I'm not saying it's a power keg, but I, I'm glad we're. Almost at that point of invitation because I think it's year after year, I'm betting on a really good year. We'll see.
Well, Travis, is your point that you think it should be banned a hundred percent?
I'm saying.
Is it safety?
I'm not saying anything right now. I'm saying, I'm just staring at her facts and I, I. Seventy percent of 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 river deaths are alcohol related, seventy percent of those deaths and eighty-three percent on the P F Ds. We've covered that, Bravo. I'm just, it's, and the music, I mean, all these things kind of come and stem from this, right?
Right.
Um, and I think really just talking like Friday, Saturday, Sunday anyways, right? Um, I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying that I think I don't want to get, I don't want that to be off the table. I think there's a bigger.
I don't think it is by any means.
Okay. I think there's a lot of layers to this that still need to be unpacked. This is just a discussion of the plan and there has to be consensus on how to implement it.
Again, my thing too was seeing that there, you've got every single thing in here and you're one person. It's like this big, it's great. It's, it's amazing. Of course, the answer is. Let's do them all. But I'm just trying to figure out what the priority, priorities, like I said, I said, safety is, and I understand it's just. You put it in there and it happened to be last, but I just want to make sure that that is a priority.
I think adaptive management is an important aspect of every plan too, of having that built in to say, let's try this, let's see how it works and let's have. You know, the opportunity to adapt.
Without authority, without authority is difficult. I've done the ambassador at the East level with program. We can't ta- take the beer out of their boat. We can't do anything. They don't want to hear it. They just walk, basically, a lot of people just walk on by. They're gonna do whatever. This river belongs to data Washington or whatever you want to say. So, um. That piece half, peace seems like it has to be there somehow or you're just flapping your wings and some people will listen, but, um. You know, they, they listen anyway and the people that don't listen just. March on by with their flying sickle finger of faith in the air.
So, go ahead. Yeah, um, once again, just wanted to. Echo everyone here. Thank you so much for all the work and time that you put into this. This was amazing. Lots to chew on. Um, regarding enforcement. I wanted to shift it, the conversation just a little bit from alcohol to when you mentioned that you had, um. Done research on municipalities that instead of, uh, banning alcohol, done so on disposable. Beverage containers, which I think can do that. My brain immediately went to enforcement. Again, I realize I'm putting you on the spot here, so. I need to check on that as a perfectly acceptable answer. But in your research, did you come upon any like examples of municipalities that had really? Put that into play in a way that had teeth and still dialed down any possible, uh. Undesirable encounters between those that are enforcing and those that, by God, I have my cooler, I'm gonna come out on the river.
Uh, no, I don't have any.
Okay.
Any depth of, of research to cite on that and off the top of my head.
That's okay. Apologies for putting it on the spot. I just.
That's great. Your question is a great question, if, if, would be needed, you know, if you're, if you're creating this. Rule, uh, we did meet with the sheriff's office and basically their responses, if you can, um. Like they're, they're stretched thin always. They can't just pop a person out and they actually did a couple, at least one. River patrol last year. They had some awful folks go down river on sense. Sounded like the response wasn't great. From the public.
Response wasn't great in the sense of it wasn't a positive response or response was.
Static, stoked to see. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. That's just kind of her. But you know, it'll be subjective to some level of if we could provide some additional funding for the sheriff's office.
That's the key.
Probably split the person, you know, an additional. Uh, to you or whatever, between river and some other special areas that that I mean.
And, and again, uh, to realize that, you know, all of this happens in a pretty short season and on pre, I mean, it's the weekend days that it's the wildness. So you're not talking about having to do full-time person all at, you know, and then, and the sheriff was very open. Just saying, hey, get us some funding that can help. We'll put somebody on the river to help do that, of course.
Yeah. So B, it would be, it would fall on Shalane County Sheriff to police the river, not on like fish, fish and wildlife or. Or like the Forest Service, any federal agency, it would be.
Yeah, I think, I think because of the mixed jurisdiction, even. Yeah, and the fish and wildlife in this area doesn't have the US Fish and Wildlife, the chat block. Those, W E F W does, but there's like two of them for like the whole.
Right, yeah.
Three county area. So, so, yeah, it basically would.
So again, we need to wrap this up. But just, just to, this is, again, now before you, it's been, you know, placed out, you see the pieces and. Again, it's not gonna be implemented all at once, but now we're ready, you know, to start moving this forward, to start that process. And again, it's gonna be working with the county. To get someone to guide that rest of the process and you'll, you know. Um, and that's, that's kind of where we're at, so.
And we're more than happy to work with you on that, like what that would look like to get that person, you know, we're open to housing person or sheriff or. However, it would work, we're, we're not just kind of handing this over.
That was a valuable presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much, Aaron. I think one more follow-up that we, we did want is, I don't know what. What it looks like to see if there's support for going forward with the level taxi shuttle, I guess, so.
So I have it on your agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, I think we should really look at that. I also solicited a quote from One Actually Valley Shuttle and theirs was five hundred dollars per day more than the eleven year shuttle.
Wow.
And we, and we set the link in there unwilling. So we've got free quotes. So I'll bring that as an action.
Yeah. Just FYI, one of the things that I'd love to know as we're deliberating this is, under that quote. What's the timeframe? So the level shuttle pulls out of the East level with boat launch. What?
Ten AM to six PM.
Right, how many minutes? Like if the level shuttle's pulling out a level boat launch at eleven, is it coming back at eleven fifteen, eleven thirty, eleven forty?
The idea is do every twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, thanks.
Yeah.
Just to continue our loop.
Yeah.
Stay out of downtown.
Right, so all it's gonna do is it's gonna do what LOC did for the last two seasons and is not willing to do again this year because they do it for free. Um, and it would go from East level North Boat Ramp up to the fish hatchery while that is still in season, then to the bridge, potentially to the golf course. I wrote into their draft lease that we could use that lower parking lot for two big parking. I don't have any comments. We haven't had a negotiation with them yet. Um, and if it not turn around at the golf course, they could turn around the roundabout and back. So that's why we don't know. How long it's gonna take and what the regular interval will be.
That's a free shuttle.
It'll be a free shuttle to, um, if you guys approve the use of thirty thousand dollars of lodging taxes for it.
Of what, thirty thousand?
Lodging tax.
For the entire summer?
For the summer. Yeah, it would run, um, it would run twenty-three days. It would start on June twenty-ninth and it would do every Saturday and Sunday. With a four-day weekend for, uh, Fourth of July.
Oh, great.
Great information.
Have a map of that. Thank you. Yeah, for selling, there's a new business coming in town that's gonna be delivering subs to hotels and people. Are they? Going to pay the operator five dollar, there's.
We had like the drug dealer in the. If they're utilizing city assets, then they would need a permit. If they're, if they're, if they're proposing to drop people off on city property.
They're, they're just supplying them. They're just the supplier.
They wouldn't be.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, crew.
Front Street closure.
Front Street closure.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, council, it's been four years since the city closed Front Street and Eighth Streets to vehicular traffic and limited deliveries to the hours of five AM to ten AM daily. Uh, the large orange traffic barricades have become an eyesore, um, and they're not functioning as effective bear, barriers for entry to vehicles, delivery or otherwise. Uh, we've all witnessed delivery drivers simply move the orange barricades and drive through the closed streets after the posted delivery hours. And I myself seen multiple cars. Careering off, reading off of hi- uh, Highway two on the front street, just in that small space between a barricade and a curb going twenty miles plus an hour. Um, so this is just a, because we've closed this perpetually to, um, to vehicle traffic for pedestrians. Um, it's becoming an unsafe, uh, unsafe situation. So to establish effective barricades to protect pedestrians from vehicular traffic on the closed streets. Staff is recommending utilizing the blue bollards typically used during festivals on a more permanent basis. While automatic retractable bollards are the long-term plan, uh, deploying the bollards we have now will be a safer interim solution. Uh, staff would also like to change the delivery hours from six AM, uh, to eleven AM daily, moving from the five AM to ten AM. This change would allow public work staff to remove bollards at six AM to allow for deliveries and then parking staff would come in and replace the bollards at eleven AM. Ensuring that no vehicles are trapped in the pedestrian plaza. They would start at Gustavs and sweep down, make sure everybody's gone as they're replacing the bollards. Um, horse carriages and pedicabs, um, would still be allowed to operate on the closed streets. We would effectively leave one bower removed. Um, we had that conversation with them and, and, uh. And they're accepting, they, 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 uh, recommended that. Um, I'll show you where the bowers are. Supposed to be. Okay. So we currently have. We have the, uh, we, we have, bollards exist right there. Barricades exist, they're replaced by bollards. So short term, uh, we don't have any bollards up at Highway two and Gustavs. Those are on order. So those, those will be the, the removable bollards. We have bollards on eighth and, and, uh, and front. Those would be installed now. We have bollards for, um, ninth and front and we have bollards for ninth, um, on the other side of ninth, both east and west. These are small, the ones on the. These are small, the ones on the east side of ninth um, are small and cars have actually driven over them and got hung up on them. So I spoke to staff today about ordering additional bollards that are gonna be just like the other ones, the big ones, the big boys. Um. Yeah, and then eventually and then bollards. And then we'll put also the bollards at tenth uh, and and front. Um, and then we'll just use it in an existing barricade. For the near term um, at A Street Commercial. And uh, staff walked us with emergency management. They recommended adding some additional eco blocks to the location by um, the hotel. Parking lot between Gustav's and Visconti's.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and additional. Eco blocks. At the parking lot that's adjacent to the bower building. So this is the proposal. We have been outreach to the business community. We briefed the Chamber of Commerce a couple of times. We briefed the Downtown Steering Committee. Um, Shannon's been speaking to Shannon, our parking manager, who's in the audience, as we speak to the delivery drivers as well. Uh, we have heard that there's some concern. Uh, about delivery timing and we definitely don't want to negatively impact our businesses. However. Deliveries to the folks on Front Street largely happen in the center line, center lane of Highway two. And anything on the back can be accessed through alleys. So there are ways to get to these businesses. It might not be what they're used to by going through the front door, but there are other access points. Um, so again, the proposal would be to open up the streets at six AM. Allow delivery trucks to come through and then eleven AM parking staff will go through and bump things up again. Um, what I did notice is I uh, that we don't have anything in our code about the closure of Front Street or about the hours. So if you guys are susceptible amenable to this, I would recommend we um, we amend chapter ten oh five. Uh, of our code, which is local traffic regulations. Uh, right now, the only thing we have in here is that no trucks over five tons are supposed to be operating. On Ninth Street between Highway two and Commercial. I'm not sure that's being invited. I'm sure I've seen I sent a truck once or twice going down that road.
Um. What was your shift from five to five to ten to the six to eleven?
The rationale for that is we don't have staff on five AM. And we heard from shop owners that they 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 received deliveries. They don't have staff coming into their shops until ten. So we wanted to give them that extra hour to receive deliveries. So um, it would. Operationally, it would work. We wouldn't have to amend anybody's schedule of public works to remove the bollards to allow for. To get in and then parking staff is on um. They're on shift every seven days a week at that eleven hour, eleven AM hour.
So the worst concern when the business, it's would impact them to some some degree just because. Cause it can't go anytime.
Right, yeah, and I was down. Just yesterday, I saw both FedEx and UPS. Driving down Front Street at twelve thirty. Um, uh, we see our UPS driver driving down Front Street all the time.
They will, they can.
They they will, they can, what you allow you to teach. So we have these signs up which have just been ignored. Um, we've had a lot of complaints from the community about the aesthetics of the orange barricades. So this is a temporary solution that will be temporary for a few years. Until we go through the design process for the permanent redevelopment of Front Street, we can implement um, automatic bollards.
I really like the idea of the permanent bollards being placed. I would recommend that we probably put the ugly ones behind the blue bollards for a short period of time so people. Notice the new bollards. So we don't have some accidents with vehicles, um, bollards blocking the whole road. Those barricades blocking the whole road. So that they still have to get out of their car to move the orange ones and then notice that that is gonna be. Make it, it's gonna be pointless for their, enough to do that.
So you would say, for example, at Front Street and Gustav's, when we put the new bollards in, you would propose that we leave up the barricades. On the Highway two side of that.
I would actually have them behind.
Yeah.
So they see the bollards, but they but for the four years, people have noticed the orange barricades, right? And so for public safety for a for a short period of time, I would recommend those stay out, even though they're ugly.
Yeah.
Just so that we start training people that the bollards are in there.
Stoplights.
When they put them on for a certain period of time.
But they got. Used to them.
Yeah.
Would it help at all, you think, if we made it from six to twelve? Well, then you're starting to get into the pedestrian time.
Okay, I just didn't know how that was.
Shops open at ten.
Uh, yeah, it does start getting busy.
Yeah.
For the new hour downtown.
Yeah, good.
Is eleven still a good idea? I mean, would six to ten be a good window?
I like the idea of eleven as a. Compromise.
Yeah, that's that's why I mentioned twelves. Yeah, that's even. But. I do know we need to, we need to initiate that for sure.
And I just before, we will get complaints and we'll resolve them. We will get the hiccups and we'll work through them. Uh, a lot of pushback will become, will come from not only our large UPS, FedEx, USPS, but I've seen. City House uniform vehicles get out, move the bollards and they don't move them back. They get out, they do what they're gonna do, they just.
They usually don't move them back as they describe right on.
And then what you have have happened is. Is private people start using that. I mean, I've seen many people, private vehicles get ticketed on Front Street. Cause they're just following the delivery truck down. They just ignore the the orange barricades altogether.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have, so right now, as far as. Gustav's and Highway two.
We don't own anything there, but we the bollards have been ordered.
Okay.
Which we would need for festivals. If you guys didn't want to go this direction, it would still need them there for festivals.
Right, right.
So you think that if you leave the orange things there, if you don't leave the orange things there, people aren't even gonna see the bollards?
Uh, it's a concern that Councilmember Vesper raises.
My mom's done that. She went into a church parking lot and they had like a. Chain, a wa- chain across it and it drove across the front of her hood. She didn't see the chain.
She didn't see the chain.
And so, yeah.
Bollards are more.
But I don't think I'd run out, run down a bollard.
You would, you would. Yeah, I think it's a good idea for two weeks. I just think she'll, they'll get it and then they're gone.
But, okay.
I guess the other thing is I'm I'm. I realize this is something that's likely going to happen, but. Staff is prepared for the eventual conversation from a shop owner that said, I missed my weekly delivery because. Of your stupid decision.
We're prepared.
Okay, great.
And we've been telling them, I mean, it's not like they don't know.
On that end, I've worked for Pepsi. I mean, like those guys don't wanna miss deliveries. They're losing money. They don't. They're not gonna not deliver.
Do you send something to? Do we know what companies come and so you send something in advance to them saying, bye away in two weeks?
Chick, Shannon, are you working on that? No, you guys, okay, just wanted to know if you guys.
We're doing a lot of outreach on the state with people.
Okay.
So we're reaching out to them.
Thank you.
But no matter how much information you give them. You'll still get the pushback when it happens. And you'll get people, I mean, again, they're gonna test to make sure, are you really serious? Um, and when they get locked in. They'll realize. All right, we've got. Uh, break time and we will. Reconvene itself. I called the order and the meeting in Lomond City Council for May fourteenth. Please. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Travis, you wanna start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Anne Hesper.
Zeke Brester.
Shane Fair.
Travis McMaster.
Hey, Ronan Baron has asked for an excused absence for tonight. I would entertain a motion to excuse her.
So move second.
Moved by. Shane seconded. By Sharon. All those in favor, let me see your hands. He's excused. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So vote.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Zeke. Any questions? Did you give yours answered?
I did, thank you.
All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passing unanimously. Move on to any comments from members of the public? Do you have any online?
There are three attendees on Zoom.
Any raising their hands?
No, sir.
Right? Seeing none, we will move on to our. Public hearing. These are on flood regulations. A following public hearing will be considering the action of ordinance sixteen ninety two that were established flood. Regulation amendments. Willa Vesper will provide the staff report, which will be followed by any public comment or testimony. And we just ask that anybody that wants to comment would state their. Name and address for the public record and address their comments to the city council. I would open this at seven oh five within the public hearing. Willa.
Thank you, Mayor, council members and those in attendance. The flood regulations were reviewed by the Department of Ecology during a periodic review in twenty twenty three. The recommendations for amendment come from Department of Ecology, have been reviewed by staff. And the Planning Commission at a public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended. Approving the proposed amendments. There's been no public comment on this. Set of amendments either at the Planning Commission or at subsequent um. City council workshops or comments provided directly to uh, city staff. We find that the majority of the comments help provide the. The regulation in accordance with state law or provide additional clarity to our regulations. That will be beneficial should we have to implement any development in the flood regulation zone area. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Anybody wanna make any comments or have any questions? I not see any.
I'll be online.
Online, well. All right, we will close the. Public hearing at seven oh seven. And we will move on.
Can I ask a question?
Oh.
Yes, um, I just noticed that the PR I save out your request was in there. Can I, am I, can I vote on that?
Oh, yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
That's general enough, yep. Um. A discussion now on the code consistencies in preparation for our public hearing. It'll be next. Session that we have, Willa.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This time is provided to review the code consistency amendments. Uh, the amendments were reviewed by the city council at a previous meeting. Uh, one of the requests was to take the staff report where all the items were itemized A through. P, quite a few amendments there. And put those labels on the actual attachment. So staff has done that. So you can see where things are correlated. They generally fell in line with the order of the staff report, although there are a few um, that were out of order. Any case, we hope that helps you provide some clarity on this. The amendments are very straightforward. Um. And the Planning Commission has reviewed them at a public hearing and is recommending that the city council. Adopt the amendments as presented. I will note that in your packet under tab nine, the very last page. As noted in the write-up section, is a memorandum notice to the city council. As many of you know, Shalane County has um. Been challenged with a section of our zoning code for accessory dwelling units. That requires a connection to water and sewer utilities of the city. This line of code uh, can be moved. And we are recommending adding it to this package of code consistency amendments. We would move it from title eighteen, which is a zoning code to title fourteen point fourteen. Chapter fourteen fourteen, which is. A long title, street sidewalks, water, stormwater, wastewater and miscellaneous utility development standards. It would be in a new section, fourteen fourteen oh eight five required connections. We would add this to the um, existing amendments and that is. Normal and consistent with uh, any adoption process. There can be additions made at the council level at the last hearing, if there are any concerns about that, but. More importantly, we think this will resolve. Or go a long ways towards resolving the county's concerns about water and sewer connections for accessory dwelling units. In the urban growth area. So with that, I'd open it up for any questions.
Uh, Lilith, is that uh, that memorandum from the county? Is that also for the city? That apply for city ADUs also that they need to be on a separate? Water sewer facility?
Yes.
City limits. And they wanted, they want that to apply to the UGA.
Well, it's currently been adopted by the county and the county is challenged because we don't extend sewer. And often don't extend water uh, in the UGA. Uh, unless they meet certain standards and criteria. So by moving this from the zoning code and putting it in fourteen fourteen, which the county has not adopted. The county is free to. Do their normal process of saying, do you have either a city water connection or a well or and do you have a septic system? So they'll do their standard county review for utility services.
Wouldn't the county have to go through the process of re adopting LMC eighteen? Otherwise, it'll just stand as they have adopted it.
Yeah, once the city council takes action on this topic, I will forward that ordinance. To the county for their adoption. In the past, they have agreed to adopt the code amendment. Outside of a normal yearly cycle. So I will present it to them. It'll be up to them to adopt it in order for it to be in effect.
But essentially what this does is removes them being able to use us as the reason why they're not. Allowing the building to happen in the county.
It's not a conflict for them, right? Cause it's.
It never was. It's just the way they're interpreting it.
Right, so now we put it fourteen.
We get, we get, we get it out of the.
Yeah.
We take away their ability.
Right, right, to hide behind that one, right.
Any other questions of Lilith?
I had a, yeah, Lil had some uh, questions in the home occupation section. Um, so. First off. Can't seem to hold on to that percentage. Of lot coverage. It's, there's, it's a thirty five sixty five. Percentage that we've talked about before. And is it that? Only sixty five percent of the. Six uh, six thousand square foot lot can be covered by a roof? Is that? If I got that, am I getting that right?
No, um, lot coverage, yeah, lot coverage is thirty five percent.
Under a roof.
Yes, that's typically, we give them two feet for the eaves. So that's not included in that, but yes.
Okay, so thirty five percent covered by dwelling or garage. Up to thirty five percent. The rest has to be open space.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, the question I've got. Is that um. The um. Where was this? Let me get this right. Uh, on page nine of twenty nine.
Okay.
It's part of the, let me dial it up. Have to do with prohibitions for. Uh, B. Home occupations. Um. So. It mentions. We should have talked about this before, but I. I lost track of how this works, so. Forgive me for bringing this up. Um, it says the following, so on page twenty nine of twenty nine, um. It says, the following uses are prohibited as group B home occupations. And it gives a list. And then it finishes with D. Transient accommodations and or lodging. So. If one has a home occupation and also has a bed and breakfast. Are they talking about? Excluding. Are they saying that they can't have a bed and breakfast because it's less than thirty days? Are they saying that they can't have a bed and breakfast because it's less than thirty days? Or are they, what are they saying?
Um, they're saying that a home occupation is not considered transient or transient's not considered a home occupation. That transient accommodation has been defined differently than bed and breakfast. So the bed and breakfast permit is handled as a conditional use permit. The home occupation is a different type of use and permitting process. And it does not allow for transient. But again, bed and breakfast is defined and regulated separate from transient. So it's just saying it's not allowed as a hotel short-term rental.
Would they allow uh would they allow regular rental, A D rental to operate along with a home occupation like say a a hairdresser and then you also have an A D U uh attached or something that also rented for more than thirty days, you know, a year-round rental? Would that be permitted?
Yes, we don't, we don't regulate year-round rentals or month-to-month rentals. If you're renting month-to-month, your A D U, there's no permit process through the city for that review. The review occurs for parking at the time of the building permit. So so long as they maintain their required parking space, there's nothing that we review or regulate per month-to-month rentals.
Okay, and the same with, it's just a whole different category. I'm getting a sense that the bed and breakfast is a conditional use permit. This is another animal, so to speak, so they don't really cross trails.
They don't. And like you have asked before, can they do both a bed and breakfast and a home off? They could. I would bump the home occupation request to the hearing examiner since they already have a bed and breakfast. If they were, if they were to submit that, so that the hearing examiner can look at the totality of land uses and impacts and make it conditional.
Meaning that you would make that decision that here an examiner would determine if there was an impact to the neighborhood from a home occupation and a bed and breakfast, because they're both that's what's going on, okay?
Yeah, that's the goal there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You bet, Zeke. Thank you. Any other questions?
Not seeing any. You ready for, I'm forward next time for with public hearing and action?
Yeah, we'll have a public hearing on the code consistency at your next meeting.
All right, we'll move on then to the next, which is cemetery burial lot size liner discussion. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor Florrie. Mayor Florrie, council members, good evening. Appreciate the grace. My son had a T-ball game. I could not make the study session, so again, thank you for that. I get roped, I get roped in every once in a while to coach, so. So that, yeah, this item before you this evening, as the title indicates, it's just a discussion on the cemetery primarily related to uh a deviation to the recommendation from the twenty twenty-two cemetery master plan. So a little bit of context here. The way it currently sits, we have just about one, maybe we have one to three cemetery plots that are available for sale. And um we, those are, those are not necessarily selling very quickly because they're adjacent to the maintenance shed that's out there. Nonetheless, we are essentially out of room. And we do have, if I could share my screen, this would actually be helpful. I will show you. Let me know if folks can see the map. Can you see the map of the cemetery? Okay, so in in summary, we're gonna be looking at the the areas noted in C on the map. So I went through this two thousand twenty-two cemetery master plan effort. Uh, the recommendation was to plot or plat the areas noted in C uh to accommodate liners. So the advantage of having liners uh is that you could, you could have more cemetery plots in an area because they're they're pre-lined, so you don't have to excavate a full burial. So this was the recommendation and uh council supported this action in twenty twenty-two. And since then, we've had a budget of a hundred thousand dollars to explore, expanding the cemetery in more of an interim, it's more of an interim on an interim basis. And this with the area noted in A on the attached map. So this area is already platted for traditionally sized plots. So those are ten foot by four foot traditional burial plots. And uh once we started getting into contracting with a consultant that we selected to do this work, we started to get a better understanding of the planning level cost estimate that it would take to to basically enhance area A on the map to be able to sell those burial plots. And the cost is pushing six hundred thousand dollars. And that is to landscape the area, tree removal, irrigation, the engineering architectural work associated with that. So it's it's kind, it's somewhat cost prohibitive. So it makes sense to already plat the areas that have irrigation infrastructure. So you can see the upper portion of the map areas, the upper C areas. That is already irrigated and has turf. So that, so that the consideration is to replat these areas with the traditional ten foot by four foot burial plots and deviate away from the liner, the liners, the liner plots, which are eight and a half by three foot. So that is how it's currently um platted, but it's not shown on the map because it was a part of this master plan. And it, but how, because the issue with the eight and a half by three foot uh plat, the sub-buryal plot sizes, is that they cannot accommodate a traditional burial site because we have to over excavate the area to to, you know, accommodate um a full, a full burial. And we just don't have the capital to pers- to proceed with the liners. So the planning level cost in today's dollars is is about a million and a half to two million dollars to put the liners in the way it's been uh platted as a result of the master plan. So I just wanna gauge the council to see if there's any pushback of deviating from the liner, the pre-liner concept and going to a traditional burial plot size of ten foot by four foot in order to increase the inventory of sellable burial plots. And in terms of level of effort to resurvey and replat the area, it's gonna be approximately a five to eight thousand dollar effort. So not, not terribly expensive.
How many do we lose that way? Do you know, Tom?
Yeah, good question. So right now, if we, with the, with the pre-liner, if we would go uh singles, there's approximately seven hundred and forty-eight burial plots. And when if we go traditional, it'll reduce it to seven hundred and twelve. So go from nine forty-eight to seven twelve. But if we did doubles, obviously you just double the nine forty, so it'd be well over, you know, almost depending, because they propose to do some plot, not all the section in doubles, but so you could get anywhere up to, you know, eighteen hundred burial plots if you did double pre-liners at the eight and a half by three. So we would be losing potential by going the traditional.
Still by yourself, seven hundred instead of two. Any other questions?
Yeah, Tom, are we talking, are we talking about section C or section A?
So C, C is in Charles. So the upper two sections of C is, it's current, as you could tell by the the map, it's already irrigated and has turf. So it's more cost-effective in the short term to just replat that area to to traditional burial plot sizes and start selling them. Instead of waiting to do the liners, because the capital outlay is a limiting factor, because again, we'd have to you know, spend one point five to two million dollars to line these in order to make them sellable.
That's what would be out if we went with the pre-liners all the way through the whole plot, right?
Yeah, that's everything for, yeah, all, all of section C. And we can do a portion, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Tom, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hesburgh.
Uh, just out of curiosity, based on our historical plot sales, if we were to continue forward with what the council had decided in twenty twenty-two and do the liners, what sort of timeframe would we be on to recoup the cost?
That's a good question. I believe the cemetery master plan had that outlined. And if we went singles, I wanna say it was a, it was either a twenty-five year or a forty year. Here, if I could stop sharing for just a moment, I could tell you. I know right where it's at. Forty-five years if we did double liners. If we did single liners, it'd be twenty-eight years. So it'd take twenty-eight years of revenue to equal cost to construct, basically, at the rates that the master plan proposes.
So if we eliminate liners, they're really not gonna be on the table again for us, because nothing's gonna get more affordable.
We could, I mean, we could replat section A and pursue lot, pre-liners in that area at a few, at some point in the future.
Uh, Tom, you said that if we went with the traditional ten by fours, like that's seven hundred and some, some lots?
Seven hundred and twelve.
This was brought before you guys before, when, while you were
Twenty-two.
Now, what was the discussion that, what was, was it the same information?
Yeah, a lot of it was about efficiency and burial, burial process with the liners. So you're not continually going out and single digging.
And that, and that was a staff recommendation as well, was the liners. Again, this is just a consideration to expedite sellable plots.
Is there a way we could potentially piecemeal this? Do one section of C first with liners? Something like that, so that it's a lower price point, but it still gives you the efficiency out there at the
For a decade.
Yeah, any, we have all options on the table at this point, because we have not. In fact, we wanted to have this discussion before we proceeded with our consultant, so we could refine their scope of work accordingly. So any, anything's on the table right now. Staff recommendation is just at least have some area where we could just go traditional in the short term to to create some sellable lots.
How often, how many barrels do we need a year? Just put in a number on that, like how many lots we sell and
Well, right, right now, nobody wants to buy the few remaining we have, because they're adjacent to the maintenance building. So when they find out that that's where they are, they they immediately lose interest.
Like section C? Oh, anywhere but where it is now, right? Okay, so I'm curious, Tom, when you say though, recouping would be twenty-some years to, you know, what is that, say, how does that fit in with also the need to to build the the ongoing maintenance?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. So that, what, what the cemetery master plan had laid out, that was just to recoup the cost of the liner, so that doesn't um and that was just based on their proposed rate, which can be adjusted. So that was just give a rough, kind of a rough sense of what it would take to recoup the capital. But we, we need to evaluate our rates generally with the, with the cemetery. We are, we are quite inexpensive comparative, comparatively.
Just a little background, our cemetery is paid for out of the general fund. We do have a cemetery endowment fund in the original endowment, which I can never locate. It was many, many decades ago that it started and there's just no documentation that tells us who gave it to us or when. And there appeared to be no ordinance or resolutions or minutes of when, and this whole thing became what it is today. And the endowment fund though requires that when someone gives you an endowment, you don't spend the endowment. You can spend interest gains once you get them. And so ever since that endowment fund was created, every time the city sells a plot or a niche, they split that cost alone fifty-fifty and half of it goes into the endowment fund and half of it goes into the general fund. Any other fees that happen, stone setting, other just extra pieces that people can buy into, those go a hundred percent into the general fund. So this big project, and Tom mentioned over a million dollars, if you wanted to pay for this, even if we piecemeal it, we, we will do it out of the general fund. If we don't have enough money, we can borrow it, we can general obligation bond it. And then we have annual debt payments to pay it back. So we have options of how to work with it. The, the problem with this master plan was that it didn't take into what I really wanted, which is, hey, tell me how many spots I can put. Tell me what the pricing needs to be to get me to one, pay myself back, but two, keep putting enough money in this endowment fund that once it's completely full, we are able to live off interest gains only to maintain it and to perpetuate.
So can we do that now? That sounds like a good idea.
We haven't done that piece of the plan.
Yeah, that's the, that's the missing critical piece.
And, and we could, we have, we have H D R under contract. We could consider a supplemental agreement with them to look at the cemetery. I don't know if it would take a ton of effort, Chantel. I would defer to your thoughts on that. You think that'd be a big effort for H D R?
Um, I don't know if it would be either. Um, I was under the impression when we went into this master plan with who
It was parametrics that did this.
Yeah, so they had asked all the right questions of me in preparation of answering all those unknowns. But unfortunately, that never came through the plan itself. As Tom mentioned, there are some numbers in here that talk about recouping your, your costs if you go with these liners. But we never got to that point of let's build up the endowment fund. It could be a quick save, I think, maybe, but
Yeah, and I, I'm happy to reach out to our H D R contact and just see what, what level of effort that would take.
Sounds like there's a lot of information we still need. Be able to make a really good decision as to how to move forward with the cemetery in a lot of different ways. And if, if that's something that our consultant can do for us, I feel like it's, it's worth the effort.
I think we should also reach out to people and find out how many people want full burials. I think, I think people are trending to cremation.
Trending now, yeah.
It's a way better land use to do beaches.
Right.
And, 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 and um inurnments versus internments.
Well, we also, I mean, we have some stats from the last couple of decades, right, on purchases and burials and those sorts of things, right?
They, they talked about the fact that people are transitioning.
Right.
And so they did, in my opinion, they were recommending you don't go with these full burial plots everywhere. You do do exactly what Sally Condon took on and you expand those smaller, easier ways that folks want.
Yeah, yeah, the master plan recommended adding more niche walls and and then those are, those are relatively inexpensive additions. However, we do have some niche capacity still.
Tom, off the top of your head, uh, do you know the existing plotted and and pretty much filled areas? What is the percentage of that compared to the entire property?
Hmm, that's a good question. I'd have to find out. I do know that there's some um inurnment plots. Those are the smaller ones. There's, we have a number of those and um I, I, I really feel uncomfortable stating this, but there's an area of the cemetery called Baby Land that's quite vacant. And those are smaller burial plots. But most of the full-size burial plots are sold with the exception of just, like I said, one to three adjacent to the maintenance building.
So I'm, I'm curious, Tom, too, when you, when you said a million and a half, say, to do that sections, was that all four of those Cs or was it?
That's all four, correct. That was all four C, yeah.
So what if, and I think this is what Ann was saying, we take off and do one of those four with the with, as is with the liners in. It would buy us, again, a, a good chunk.
I also think we need to do a lot of the finance, financial research, though. And how truly recoup the costs over time um with a, with a rate study as well.
Yeah, recouping the cost and putting in the down and down.
If you look at the business too, right, as a, as a business side, the projections are in here and it's really amazing, right? Two thousand forty, or to the same two thousand thirty, twenty-eight percent of your burial, sixty-nine percent will be cremations. Two thousand thirty-five, thirty percent, thirteen, nineteen percent will be burial, burials, seventy-five percent cremation. That's a national.
Well, that's why I asked about phasing, because the statistics are showing we may not need the It may need to be niches instead, so.
Or maybe more land if people wanted to do the uh body composting that is becoming
Or maybe more land if people wanted to do the, uh, body composting that is becoming.
Okay.
I'm just barely talking.
Thanks for that, Sallie.
Yes. I've seen that, and that grabbed you too, that's a planted tree up top.
And also too, we, and, and I know I pulled the map down, but we also have the section A too, that's already, that's an option. But again, the, the limiting factor there is that, is the cost of improving. Um, the irrigation and, and the turf and, and all, you know, the beautification piece of it, it's already platted as traditional burial plots. So we can still pursue section C as liners. But we, we need to figure out. You know, is, is the count, you know, there's a capital, substantial capital cost to beautify section A, and one issue that we have is. The cemetery is watered with the, with our domestic water, and we, you know, per code, we cannot add any more ERUs to that. I mean, we'd be going against our own code, so we don't know if we have the capacity with the irrigation system to expand into section A. So that's, again, that's why we're here, so one, just to keep that in mind, we do have that section A already platted as traditional, it's just.
So, I have another question, Tom, looking, looking at our existing platted cemetery and the internal road. It looks like. The sections closest to the eastern part of the cemetery, the right of way is narrower than the middle section. And the western section that's already developed. Is there any way we can further align that and create a few more? Plots within the already irrigated areas that are not a part of the road?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I, I assume, I mean, I believe the sections are fairly consistent. Uh, that's not true. I don't think that they are, I, I do think that, that, that is an option.
I mean, that could be something short-term for us that could fix our numbers issue, and then we can continue to kind of look into the financial aspects of our expansion.
No, that's a really good point.
Tom, our whole entire cemetery is almost, um, nine point seven or nine point seven acres or ten, you know, ten, both the ten acres, right? And we've got, it's committed to cemetery acreage, is that right?
Uh, that's a good question, I'd have to check that.
It's seven, it's a two, three point seven acre, our parcels.
The parcels are two.
Seven, seven point four acres.
Seven point four. Oh, it was seven point four?
No.
Oh, okay. All right.
Any other questions?
Would we consider? Um, are we at a point where we're not actually committing to trying a partial thing yet, we're just, that's just on the table?
We're just discussing what options we want to look at, we know we gotta get more information.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get a feel for which direction you gotta wanna go.
Yeah, because again, we, we have a consultant that we've, we've selected, because we have a hundred thousand on our budget. And based on the cost estimates that we had in the cemetery master plan, we were not expecting. You know, five hundred plus thousand dollars to beautify section. A, we were assuming we had adequate budget to do so, but we were surprised to find out that we were. N- n- nowhere near what, what it's likely gonna cost.
Right. Can I hijack the screen for a second to get clarification, Councilmember Hesper? Is this the area, Anne, that you were, oh, sorry, is this the area that you were talking about, you're trying to get some additional plots in the existing?
Yes, where, where we irrigate, but there's, it's not actually platted.
Right.
Yep. Well, because the, the section to the east. Right of way there is narrower. And so I was thinking if we can align that straight across, we can get some plots in there.
Yeah, we could. Yep.
Because we haven't developed the road there anyway, so.
That's a good suggestion, Anne, thank you. All right.
Okay, well, uh. So I will, I will take this information and circle back with. Our consultant that we have, where Andy's managing this project, but we'll circle back internally and see what we come up with in terms of a scope of work. Um, and we, and, and in the meantime too, I'll reach out to HDR and see if, what the level of effort. It would take to do a, a quick, basically rate study on the cemetery.
Tom, just one last thing, so what we're focusing on is section parts of section C? Yeah, not so much A, but definitely section C, because that's already irrigated and.
Correct, yeah, so it's more cost-effective to basically make those plots sellable. If we go a traditional ten foot by four foot, so that's an interim affordable solution.
Okay.
Any other solution, any other solution aside from what Councilmember Hesper pointed out, that's a, that's a interim solution as well. But the other two that were on the table just would be more, it would take longer to, to come to fruition.
Right. Okay, thanks, Tom.
No, thank you, appreciate it, Council.
All right, well, we'll get back. Um, next, action item ordinance sixteen ninety-two, the flood regulation amendments. I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve ordinance sixteen ninety-two amending the flood regu- regulations. And definitions as, as recommended by the Department of Ecology and the Planning Commission.
Second.
Group by Shane, seconded by Anne, any other questions? Being done, all those in favor, let me see your hands, passes unanimously.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Action, Resolution eleven, twenty twenty-four, the rate and fee schedule on this is particularly, um, addressing garbage, I believe, Tom.
That's correct, thank you, Mayor Florrie. Councilmembers, what's before you this evening? Is a recommendation to approve resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four, which is rate and fee schedule update. And the two primary changes before you this evening that are noted in the red line version attached in the packet is, one, just updating. The Kodiak bear resistant tote fees, which we discussed at a previous city council, a study session. And the second update is that we included the Big Belly self-compacting street can fee. Um, and that, again, is stated in the packet, is for internal use only, so we, we bill ourselves to. To basically support the downtown with lodging tax, because that, that's, those are, those cans are primarily serving the tourism that. Uh, the visit the downtown core. And one thing to note too, again, just to reiterate on the bear proof, the Kodiak cans, we, we basically created a fee that. That, that does not disincentivize folks to use the Kodiak cans, so if the Kodiak cans, which are ninety-six gallon. If they're used in lieu of the three hundred gallon totes, we created the fee to be pretty similar to. Um, the three hundred gallon tote, however, we did add a surcharge, monthly surcharge. Um, let me find it in the rate and fee schedule, it's not. It's not a substantial surcharge, but it's a seven dollar per container per month charge, and that, what that allows us to do is just build up. Some capital to replace the, the Kodiak can within its expected useful life, which is five to eight years. So there is a little bit more cost with that as well, same with the ninety-six gallon totes, so there's been some folks that have a ninety-six gallon. Container, and they want to transition over to a ninety-six gallon Kodiak, it's the same price as a ninety-six gallon, however, we do add that seven dollar per month. Per container fee onto that. And then the second fee, as I previously discussed, was the Big Belly street can, and, and that is a sixty-five dollar. Per can per collection, and we base that on an estimate of the cans being serviced approximately four to five times per week.
What's the reaction from the business community on this, is any connection with them on it, are they aware what's? You certainly know something's up, but are we having contact with how they, like, do many of them have that three hundred gallon tote thing, or is that just simply? That's not what usually they, they use?
No, mo- our mo- mo- the customer base that we serve largely have the three hundred gallon totes. Because that we, we serve commercial multifamily, there's, there's very few that use the ninety-six or sixty-four gallon. We do have some accounts that utilize them, but primarily the three hundred gallon totes.
Okay. And so they're gonna lose, uh, going to the ninety-six, well, I don't know if I got this right, but. You go to the ninety, ninety-six twice a week. Uh, they get two hundred gallons, almost close to one hundred ninety-two gallons of waste, and they lose almost over a hundred, hundred gallons of waste. With going to that as compared to the three hundred gallon, I just was wondering where, where they're, we're at with that, have they spoken about that, or? There.
I haven't heard anything, any complaints from those habit, but we also have not implemented a fee change. Yeah, we, we took those that had a three hundred as pilot test.
Right.
We gave them three if they had room for three. Some didn't have room for three, so they only got two, but we never changed the rate. So this rate is gonna be a new thing that they're all going to feel once you guys approve it, we can now implement it.
Okay.
Is there some difference, you're calling it Kodiak cans and you're calling it bear resistant cans, is that the same thing?
Yeah, my apologies, I'm, I'm, I'm mixing terms, they are the same, Councilmember Waters, they're the Kodiak bear resistant totes.
Okay.
The brand name, it's like the S.
Oh, it just happens that we're the.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, Kodiak is the manufacturer, yeah.
Two different things here or something, okay.
It just fits, Sharon, it just fits.
Yeah, it does fit, I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just thinking, are we, will we got two different things going here, or it's the same thing only? Sometimes Tom calls it Kodiak and.
Yeah, to, to Chantel's point though, for the folks that do not have room for three Kodiaks. And they need additional service days, there will be a slight increase on their fee, but if they do have three Kodiak totes that replaced. Their three hundred gallon tote, the service days should remain the same.
Um, I'm just wondering, these, these Kodiak. Cans or Big Belly, I would term it.
Oh, sorry, the big.
The Big Belly isn't here yet, right? It's with here. If you go right outside, here, right outside, that's a Big Belly.
Okay. See, have you composted?
No, I had composted, me like with the.
Okay, so the compost containers that we have at City Hall, those are the Kodiak.
Okay.
Cans. The Big Bellies are the new trash cans downtown, and we have one right here, but at the entrance that were deployed about three weeks ago.
So I guess my question was, Tom, with that compacting factor. Maybe they don't lose so much. Um, with a, with a ninety-six gallon compactor, they get more in there than they would get, or at least comparable to what a three hundred gallon tote.
Those are only public, those are Big Bellies are only ours that are public, they're, they're not private. Those, the compacting ones are not.
Oh, that's not commercial.
That's not for.
Right, we, we just, yeah, we're just adding a, a fee in there, because we, we built, we charge ourselves. The downtown core, so we need to have a rate for them.
Sixty or whatever they're.
They were thirty-five.
Thirty-five gallon, okay, the thirty-five gallon ones that were spread throughout the downtown.
The decorative.
That's what's.
The decorative.
The decorative cans, that's what these are, the Big Bellies are replacing.
Hey, Tom, do you remember what the total dollar you and I came up with with this new sixty-five for the Big Bellies?
Oh, I want to say it was, it was right around fourteen thousand a month, I thought.
That's what I was thinking too, so with the thirty-five gallon cans, we knew that we were probably undercharging. Because of how many times our crews have to dump them. Uh, currently, we charge the lodging tax fund for these thirty-five gallon cans, and there's like sixty-five of them throughout our community. And the city pays for those, but we paid for it out of lodging tax.
Right.
We were billing ourselves about eight grand a month. So with this new rate design, Tom has said it's gonna be about fourteen thousand, because we know we need to take into account that we were taking in more. The cool thing about these Big Bellies, though, is that we're also giving weight on them. So we'll be, and that's what we pay at the driving transfer station.
Yes.
By weight, so we'll be able to figure out after some use what the real cost truly is. So you may see us asking to amend this Big Belly rate at some point, if we have data.
Um, consider adding a cleaning fee for it too.
Yeah, right, ice cream.
Yeah, ice cream.
And that was part of the overhead that Tom and I talked about, we were like, okay, this, this has been undercharged.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't just tipping fees, it was staff time to service the cans and clean them as well.
Well, just to make sure I understand, the Big Bellies are downtown and they compact the garbage.
Correct.
The Kodiak, is that something different than the bear resistant?
That's the same.
That is one.
That's one.
Just depending upon whatever you want to call it, Kodiak or bear resistant, okay.
And those are done by commercial, I mean, those are servicing businesses.
It be in the alley?
In the alley, yeah.
And so if I wanted to get one for my house, what would I be getting?
Waste management would most likely lease you a Kodiak brand bear resistant ninety-six gallon.
You can also buy it for three hundred dollars, I talked to the bear wise guys, you can purchase it or you can lease it through waste management.
You can already do that, Sharon, waste management has been doing that, a lot of people haven't jumped on board because it is an extra cost. Over just a plain ninety-six gallon.
Okay, so there's a choice there.
Right, yeah.
You put it in your garage and open it up on.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Um, I guess, for my clarification, Cam, we're talking about basically that they're gonna use, that's the ninety-six gallon container, right?
Right.
Okay, it compacts.
No, no.
No. I just.
The Big Belly is the. The tourist trash cans.
And how, but what's the capacity on the Big Belly?
They're now a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thirty-five.
They go from thirty-five, because they compact, you can get that much more in them, it's amazing the difference. So you don't have to pick them up as. Nearly as often. Um, we were basically on some of the busy, we, I mean, we were picking them up constant.
Right.
I mean, as fast as we could get through the downtown, we were starting in again to pick them up, so. This will give us a little bit of a breather.
Remember that part, the labor was significantly less. Good.
And so, do I have a Kodiak can at my house?
You do not.
No.
I do not.
You have to pay for it.
The bear resistant and the Kodiak are the same thing.
Yes.
And so I just have a ninety-six gallon tote.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Unless you arrange.
Don't even go there.
Yeah, don't, don't go there. All right, I would entertain a motion, actually.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four rate and fee schedule.
Second.
Grouped by Anne, seconded by Shane, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand, passes unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Tom.
Next action is acceptance of Zeltz, thus, uh, stormwater and road improvements and dedication of public utility. Well.
Uh, thank you, this item was in your, uh, study session, we didn't have time to talk about it. Um, I want to go through tab thirteen and just let you know what's there, and then I'll turn it over to. Uh, Tom Walkholder to complete the presentation and, uh, make the request. In tab thirteen, we have the developer extension agreement, which was done in twenty twenty-three. And it outlined the parameters for providing a sewer or stormwater. From the apartment complex essentially, down the street, but also the key component for the city was. Um, underneath Riverbend and to a new outfall, and the city and the developer agreed to. Work together to upsize that pipe, so that it had enough capacity to manage more. Uh, development in that area, as well as address a default that occurred with the construction of the Hampton Inn. And so all that work has been completed, uh, the development agreement does require the city to. Pay the developer for that upsized pipe, uh, that part of, uh, the work has not been done yet, that payment has not been made. But the developer has provided us verification that all the work is done. And paid for, so you'll see in tab thirteen, two bills of sale, they've been divided out, a bill of sale for that portion in the road. For the stormwater system. And then a bill of sale for the stormwater system beyond Riverbend, and the reason we did them separately is. Zeltz Strotts has already been dedicated to the city, we just needed the improvements verified in order to finish. And accept those improvements, and then the city will maintain them moving forward. And then the city will maintain them moving forward. So all road improvements have been completed and that bill of sale covers that. Portion of the road. The second bill of sale covers, as I mentioned, the outfall. And that portion of land has not been dedicated to the city yet. So the last two or three pages in tab thirteen are the deed and dedication paperwork. Uh, which would turn that land over to the city and we would maintain that outfall system. Uh, it is important to realize that this is a culmination of a lot of work on everybody's part. And it has been reviewed by the city engineer and public works department. Who have found that the work is complete and ready to be accepted. As well as our city attorney reviewing all documents, uh, title report on the property and the deed dedication. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom Walkholder.
Thank you, Lilith. Yes, Lilith indicated. The intent of the stormwater extension through underneath Riverbend Drive was to up. To partner with the developer to upsize that outfall. The initial design was a twelve inch and we partnered to, um. Increase it to a twenty-four inch and, and there is a cost associated with that and the city is, uh, and that was all spelled out in developer agreement. So the city's gonna partner in with the amount of forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. That'll be, uh, largely a hundred percent, excuse me, a hundred percent funded through the city's stormwater fund. And Lilith did touch on the history with this. So before I started. There, you know, the Hampton Inn was constructed and there was an issue with their retention. So they, their design, onsite design did not meet standards, so they did not retain enough of their stormwater onsite, which ultimately. Uh, was discharged downstream onto the Leavenworth House property. So they had to, they had to manage that. That stormwater as well. So the options were to install deep injection wells on their site or pursue a new outfall. And they pursued the latter, which again had some, had benefits to the larger basin because we were able to partner to upsize the outfall. And in terms of the roadway dedication. That, the roadway was constructed before I started and I know it's been pending this stormwater issue. So again, just to reiterate what Lilith mentioned, this has been, uh, in, in the works for some time now and looking forward to get this wrapped up. So there was a condition stated somewhere, bear with me, I don't know where it was specifically, but the Riverbend Drive and Zeltstrass intersection was. Quote unquote, you know, closed until the dedication. So once this dedication is complete, we'll have a fully functioning. Uh, intersection as well at Zeltstrass and Riverbend Drive. And this will help greatly primarily with public works operations for snow removal. Cause it was, it's been difficult trying to store snow at the end of that, uh, essentially a dead end, but now it'll be open. Uh, with that being said, I'm happy to entertain any questions from the public work side of things.
Um, so. Is what we're doing or what we've done going to cover the La Quinta? And the Boulder building, whatever that is, and anything else that goes on that property? We won't have to do any more work on anything. It's all going to cover it all.
So that's a good, good question. So when it comes to stormwater, there are options. So for example, the developers can choose to. Retain the, what's called the flow event, you know, the flow control. Aspects of their development. They could choose to infiltrate or retain that onsite. So they don't necessarily have to discharge. To the stormwater system. However, if they do, for example, um, some of the, Lilith, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Like the La Quinta, they, they are, they are discharging onsite, cause otherwise they'd have to extend the trunk line up Zeltstrassa further.
I, I believe that's great, correct. And then the bouldering gym is, and the spa have upsized the. Contributed to upsizing the stormwater pipe, so it goes out to the outfall.
Yeah. So to answer your question, Councilor Waters, yeah, that has all been addressed and accounted for.
It was sized to accommodate a full buildup of all that land?
All the land.
Correct.
Developers choose to tie into.
And if they don't choose, what does that mean?
They can infiltrate onsite or they can build a retention base.
Okay, but if they choose to use what's been built and ready. Is there a cost to that? Or there is a cost to that as well as if they do the work themselves? Okay.
Yeah, we have a system development charge for stormwater.
It was all set, so we're not going to flood out the Riverbend Drive area and all that. And Dwayne signed everything.
They had to get, they had to get us the access.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I had a quick question. I know that we're talking about the forty-nine, two, nine, eight, sixty-six. But in the development agreement, it also says, um, excluding cost overruns not to exceed fifty-five thousand. So have they confirmed there were no cost overruns?
Uh, to my knowledge, it, it did not exceed the forty-nine thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. We're only at the forty-nine thousand and some.
Okay, perfect. And that'll be added to the stormwater fund.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Or not? Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the improvements in Zeltstrass and associated stormwater facilities as denoted in the bills of sale.
Second.
Moved by Clint, seconded by Travis. Any other question? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. All right, the street maintenance bid award, Andy.
Thank you, Council.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second motion to, to read?
Yeah, Councilor Rick Master, good catch. Yeah, there's two motions tied to that, sorry.
Dedication of land as well.
Yeah.
A second one.
Leavenworth City Council moves to accept and authorize the mayor to sign the dedication of land for Zeltstrassa stormwater infrastructure.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Travis. Any questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Now we move on, street maintenance bid award.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, tonight you're being asked to consider, uh, awarding the bid for the twenty twenty-four street maintenance project. Um, we received three bids to this project and the lowest responsive bidder was from Central Paving LLC at Landsberg. Their total bid came in at a hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Which was below our engineers estimate of approximately a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, this is a TIB funded project, if you recall, this was at one of your previous meetings, either in late twenty-one or early twenty-three. Um, at that time, we had a total project cost of a hundred thousand dollars. As part of this, we did increase the quantity of various bid items, specifically crack seal. So that we could address all streets in the residential area that aren't being addressed, either by this project already or by the Scruggsill project. And then we also added fog seal to Front Street. Uh, from US two, two Division Street on the western half of that section, uh. And really the goal there, uh, if you're not familiar with the fog seal, it's a thin low layer foil. That we'll put down after we do all of the crack seal, even repair on it. So really it will paint the road black and also help keep water out of that area until we do our, our permit improvements to Front Street. Um, so that's why we did have some cost increase from the original project. Uh, since writing this, uh, right up for you. Uh, I did want to mention, we did receive additional funds from TIB. So originally they were contributing ninety thousand dollars. They have increased that by twenty-three thousand dollars for their total contribution of one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Which increases our total portion to just twenty, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for the entirety of this project.
Thanks.
And that comes out of our street fund.
Street, correct. Could we use the downtown portion out of lodging tax? Is that possible to calculate?
Um, yes, they're in good for it. So yes, we could be that off the top of my head. Um, fog seal we have at eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars.
That's a few popples in the residential area.
So that can be paid for by lodging tax? They are, the front street part are great.
Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the construction bid and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Central Paving LLC for the twenty twenty-four street maintenance project. In the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents pending TIB approval.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Steve. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. Fifteen percent professional services agreement. Again, here's two items under this action fifteen.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, tonight you're being asked to review and approve two professional service agreements with, uh, Parker Corporate Services. Also known as Pacific Security. These are two different contracts coming from two, two different funding sources. Uh, one is for parking enforcement, uh, which comes out of the Park Enterprise Fund. And the other is for downtown patrol services, which comes out of lodging tax. Uh, both agreements run from May through July first, uh, and are broken down into high and low demand needs. Um, we have reduced the amount of, uh, reliance on Pacific Security for parking as we've, as we, as we have added to our parking staff. Um, so in your packet, you see the breakdown of hours that this contract would, uh, would afford. And this contract's gone down, um, by about half. I think our previous contract was over, was over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then the security, uh, again, it comes out of lodging tax. And, uh, the schedule is also in your packet. I don't want to take your time to explain it. But they are two distinctly different, um, operations within Pacific Security. Uh, there was a time, um, where patrol was utilizing parking offices and we've given them direction to no longer do that. We want parking as parking, patrol as patrol, separate entities, separate tasks, no more making.
We're gonna have separate identification?
No, still the same Pacific Security.
Yeah.
But they won't have a separate.
Says the parking versus patrol, not currently.
Okay.
We would probably have to furnish that if we're gonna do that. Uh, so is this, so. I understand as we grow in parking and it's, the dollars are there to add people, we need people. Um, I, the cameras, I mean, are we, what is the cost of retrofitting one of the city vehicles for the cameras to monitor? Is this, is this a patch for somebody working on that alongside of this as a separate person? Eventually. Eventually, I do foresee that we will bring all parking enforcement in-house. Uh, we're not quite ready. I just asked for an additional full-time employee, which we brought on board at the end of last year. He's working out great. I didn't want to bring another, ask for another FTE so close to that. So we have this contract that was due, needs to be renewed, that's why this is before you do. The question about licensing, license plate for your technology is a good one. We will be talking about that more at our next meeting when Rick Williams takes your entire study session. Talk about the recommendations for our parking management plan moving forward. One of those recommendations is to buy, um, LPR technology to install onto our parking vehicles. Uh, we do have LPR technology, it's on handheld devices right now. But if we spend the roughly fifty thousand dollars to outfit our, our one, right now when we have one vehicle, we'll probably get a second parking vehicle anytime. Uh, if we outfit those, they can, they can just drive through the parking lots and automatically control them versus, um, we'll get each license plate.
Yeah.
Person ahead or is it that person? So yeah, we are moving in that direction. Yeah, good. That's so, so this is also nice too, that we're not hiring another person necessarily right now as we will potentially roll into that or those, we're still getting another person and retrofit. Yeah, we do have another person and we are continuing to invest in our technology. Any questions?
Oh, we would, I would entertain a motion for the party.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional service agreement with Pacific Security for parking enforcement. For an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
Moved by Shane, seconded by Travis. Any other questions? All in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. Part B, downtown patrol.
Yeah, we have one more motion.
That's what I'm saying. Leavenworth City Council moves to approve. Had authorized the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Pacific Security for security patrols. For an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents.
Okay.
Moved by Zeke, seconded by Anne. Any other questions? Those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. All right, next action item is on call dust control, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Florrie. Good evening again, City Council. Uh, this bit, uh, excuse me, this action item in front of you this evening is associated with an on-call dust control services contract. A little bit of background, we routinely receive dust complaints associated with the waterfront park parking lot. And the associated roadway that serves that parking lot, along with the East Leavenworth Road Boat Launch. Um, in an effort to provide staff with resources to combat the dust. Uh, we solicited a, a call for bids for an on-call dust control contractor to assist with applying, uh, dust control. Uh, material, in this case, it's lignin sulfonate to, it's a polymer that is used to mitigate dust on unpaved surfaces. Um, what, the issue is, is that we don't, we have a water truck, but the lignin sulfonate is applied by a distributor truck, which is a different application. It's more of a, uh, truck that has a number of nozzles that's able to apply the material at a very steady, low rate. So it absorbs into this, the gravel parking lot. So we do not have the capabilities to apply this material in-house. Um, so we solicited bids to five contractors from the city's MRSC roster. We only received one bid. And that was from Lyman Dust Control out of Yakima. And their bid proposal was fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents. A little bit of context on how the bid works. So this is an on-call. Contract, so each application is the way it was bid. So one application would be coming up and applying. This lignin sulfonate to waterfront park parking lot, the road and the boat launch. So each application is sixteen thousand dollars. Um, I'm not sure how many applications it will take. According to the contractor at Lyman Dust Control, they feel that two is typically, is all that you would need at a maximum. So I'm cautiously optimistic, we'll only need to do two applications. We bid it estimating there would be three applications. That's where the fifty-three thousand dollar cost item is. Um, on, on the chance that we only need one application, it would be a sixteen thousand dollar effort. And, and to support this effort, it would be funded through the parking fund. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any question, I did. Uh, does this, um, I'm trying to find it right here now. The stuff that they're, they're spraying, is it gonna also go down in the river?
Oh, good question. I, I should have highlighted that more thoroughly. Thank you, Councilor Waters. So lignin sulfonate, it's a non-toxic water-based polymer, so it's safe to apply next to the river.
And it won't bother fish or anything like that?
No, it, it won't, no.
I guess Tom might have a question. If this is for those. Places, um, would we consider lodging tax? It's just a tourist-based, I mean, that's a big part of the access.
Good, yeah, that's a good question. I, I would defer that to, to Chantel.
Yes, but it's also parking.
You could take it out of either.
You can.
Or both.
And we own that lot, right? That's our lot.
That's our lot.
Everything around that is not Leavenworth.
And East Leavenworth Road, correct.
Right.
But this is also waterfront park.
So, yeah, so get tourists, you know, it's just the resident, it, it seems to lend itself to a tourism thing more than. The city of Leavenworth's. Like parking for the citizens of Leavenworth.
So it can come out of, one of two enterprise funds, it can come out of parking, it could also come out of lodging tax.
Yeah, lodging tax is a special avenue fund. Um.
I was just wondering if that, that was a consideration.
Yeah, yeah. It could be, this could also be paid for out of street fund, which prior to the parking fund, that's where this would have come out.
Yeah. Cause they're both generated by tourists.
And residents.
Right.
And that's where the auditors will question you and say, so points to me that this is just tourists.
Right.
Or how much did you? Twenty percent of your visitors to this parking lot are tourists. So it raises lots of questions for them.
The ambassadors.
Residents do it too, though.
The ambassadors can ask those questions out there.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm just letting you know that, that, that these would be questions the auditors would ask is where did your data come from? How did you come up with this for it? Whereas if it's a parking, and by the way, you're generating a lot of parking revenue from your visitors. To help support parking lots, whether they're paying. to help support parking lots, whether they're paying lots or free lots currently.
So basically, Chantel, you're thinking this is an easier defensible justification, parking.
It is a parking lot.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
I've been on that lot and I've, I, I'm curious, um, like, I was a little surprised about the number of complaints that were sent in about the, the pool, um, swim meets and noise. And I'm curious, who's complaining, Tom, and what, how many is this for? Is it, is it four Leavenworth residents? Is this four hundred? Is this the two adjacent properties? Who's complaining about? We're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars on a dirt lot in a recreation area next to a river.
Right, right. Now, that, that's a great, that's a good question. In terms of the waterfront, waterfront park and the subsequent roads, so there's a, there's a, there's a short-term rental slash condominium complex there. So there's a, a few large hotel-type establishments there that, that do have issues with their H VAC system because it does basically, they draw in outside air and, and the dust does have an impact to them. So there's a, there's a couple, I'd say there's, there's more folks on the waterfront park and the road to that than there are the East Leavenworth Road Boat Launch, but it definitely does have dust impacts at both areas.
This impacted, have you, has this come up the past year, four years, ten years?
So since I've, since I've been here since June of twenty-one, it's, it's every single summer. Multi- multiple complaints, and some of it's the same folks coming back, but.
Again, multiple, and again, just wondering, it's a couple of businesses and some condominiums, just right?
Correct, yeah, it's, I don't, I don't have the exact number. I mean, off the top of my head, it's prob, it's probably individual-wise, it's probably half a dozen individuals.
We've had these complaints since prior to my arrival in two thousand and seven. Well, but it's definitely gotten exponentially worse with the growth of the visitor population.
Tom, I had a quick question. Did uh, Lyman Dust Control uh, give an estimate how long it would take to, to treat both these parking lots? And would the parking lots need to be closed for any certain point in time or?
Yeah, Councilmember Thayer, that's a, excuse me, Councilmember Thayer, that's a good question. So they're able to apply this in a day.
In a day.
Yeah, and the way the contract reads is they need to, we, they need to mobilize with, after a seven-day within seven days, seven business days.
And there's no, there's no timeframe between the application and when people can drive on?
No, the way, uh, they indicated to me that it's same day and there's really no limitations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question. I, I will, in fact, I will clarify that too, and we'll, we will notice accordingly if it changes.
Okay.
Is it a liquid that somebody drives in there after them and drives off with it on their tires?
I mean, it, it, I mean, it, it does have a, it does dry, and I don't know, again, I don't know that. They indicated to me it's same day and, and I will get specific information on, and if it does have to be closed or not for how long, and if so, how long?
Motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the Lyman Dust Control bid proposal and authorize the mayor to execute an on-call dust control services contract between the city of Leavenworth and Lyman Dust Control Incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents.
Second. Right, and seconded by Steve again. Um, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. opposed. Five to one.
Thank you, Council.
Travis opposed. All right, next item is Andy, professional services agreement, Ardua Group.
Hey, Mayor. Uh, this is for the twenty-twenty-four on-call transportation engineering contract. So currently, we have a very enough for an under contract for our, a, all of our on-call engineering services. Um, and they've been on-call since twenty-twenty-one, and so under uh, our best practices, we reevaluate that contract on an off-road basis. And so, uh, this was us putting out a request for qualifications. Uh, we, we had two, so you'll see there's two items on here tonight, but the first is for on-call transportation and the second was for on-call utilities. And the goal here was to just bring on more consultants that we have on an on-call basis. And then we'll let the existing contract we had expire uh, at, at the end of this year. So the on-call transportation contract, uh, city staff selected our Dura Group of Machi as the most qualified. Um, and as you'll see on the right up, there is not any sort of cost associated with this contract at this time. So this is really a backbone contract with our Dura. And then each project that they do will have a specific task authorization. And I believe that was included in your packet. But we, we drafted a task authorization that really is just the scope and fee associated with each project. So that will come to you for approval uh, for each item of work that they're gonna work on. And this is just the master contract that all of that is under. And really, this is commonly used in other agencies, uh. But more than anything, it's a way to clarify on our end where the funds are going to when they're putting our dirt for these things, so. I know when I brought other um supplemental agreements and things, it, it gets a bit confusing. Like, I think the most recent supplemental agreement, number seven of Gino, was like six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, and there's some confusion overall that money's spent because it's a ton of different projects. So that ultimately, we're going to eliminate that by just having to speak a backbone contract without any, not to exceed amount. And then each task authorization having costs. So our Dura was selected, you have two priority projects that we identified for them in the request for qual- qualifications. Um, these are two projects in our safety list, so we'll start with these, but then have plenty more projects that we intend to uh negotiate with them on. And this contract will expire December first, twenty-twenty-four, so the end of this year. And following best practices, uh, we're, we're giving ourselves the option to renew this contract with them for up to two years, but reevaluated annually. So we'll rewrite the, sorry, we will, yeah, we will rewrite the contract with them, but really, the only piece that we intend to change on an annual basis if we select them for a subsequent year is the rates. So right now with Gray Osborne, uh, the way their contract has been extended over multiple years, there's changes in the rates throughout the contract life, and really, this is going to be one rate for the one contract for the entire year. And then whatever year that task authorization is issued under, the rates will be tied to that dollar. That makes sense. So i- it's just trying to clean up our process and make it more streamlined for us to have them for all on-call transportation services.
Andy, you say December first or thirty-first?
Sorry, thirty-first. I think I said first.
So Andy, are we, uh, because of, I mean, you have to say whatever the, that for the next three years, we will not be using Gray Osborne, just because we've.
It's not that we won't be using Gray Osborne, but Gray Osborne also applies for both of our on-call transportation and our on-call utility, and they were selected as most qualified.
Okay.
The functional fee schedule that they provided in Exhibit B, every position seems to have a very broad sliding scale per hour. It seems a little irregular when it's just specific to this year. Is there any way they can get a little bit more focused with that? When they, when we assign specific projects to them? Sorry, I'm just questioning, so. Because R H two was very specific. Each position has an hourly rate from twenty-twenty-four, and it seems a little irregular that they would have such a massive sliding scale for each individual position.
Yeah, I guess that's the correct thing when we have the scope and fee. So the fee will be the, as you know, like the total dollar amount broken out for each pass. And so that'll, it'll be incorporated into that, uh, what, essentially what that dollar will be, the percent. I see what you're saying, that, that is a large range.
How big is our Dura? Like, they might have ten environmental specialists and each of them are at different rates, right?
Yeah, our Dura is a national company. They have an office in Machi, uh, uh, different sort of T O engineers. They're more local, regional. They're bought out by our Dura Group. Um, so yeah, it's a third company, there could be a large variety of people that follow the back category of something.
Usually have a rate structure specific to an office you're using, though, not just like a company-wide rate structure.
I think one of, one of that might just be the variability that we have in on-call bid. Uh, they do have it broken out per job, but at the same time, depending on what our specific task is potentially, I mean, they do intend to pull the people for that at office, as I said.
So this, I understand what you're saying about locking the limit for, for three years and then it's per. Are we still putting out R Qs within this, or they just get the award each time?
This won't be all of our projects, but specifically smaller things. Uh, i- if you have to burden for both us and consultants to constantly put out.
I was gonna ask, is that the time saving? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's obviously quite a burden to do that for a very small project, uh.
Is it, is it within the guidelines, the state, like, this is appropriate, this is?
Yeah, 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 there actually is not an R C W on it, but this is working with M R S C and their best practices. That's why that's the term I'm using cause there's not a law based on it, but it's just best practices uh, to reevaluate every four years. I think they say every five years, but we put this as every four years. But again, like, we internally will reevaluate this on a common annual basis if we want to continue. So we have no obligation to give them any work under this contract.
Sounds like a win, I guess.
And there's still question in it with this because we're not studying, this isn't a project specific.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, they already have existing on-call professional service line ends within the street, the water, sewer, stormwater funds. So my guess is we'll utilize those. And if we get to the point where we max out that all amount, maybe then some, that will be the need to address a budget.
More than anything, this will be tied to a specific capital improvement line item. So like, for example, um, one, one of their priority projects is the commercial street third to eighth sidewalk safety improvements. And that is a specific line item in the budget, and so their task authorization will be paid for under that capital or the budget on that. It's, it's not just any no running items for the engineering, normal talk stuff. Right, and it could also be the capital, and it's primarily gonna be the capital, since the goal of this, yeah, yeah.
Cause it was in the description. I'm just curious, third through eighth, why not third through tenth?
Oh, the question. So third through eighth has sidewalk, but there's sections that don't have either handrail or guardrail. And so that's the section that's along the river, uh, kind of by the bridge. And, and so really this project is brought up by our first department that maintains sidewalks in the winter. And there's concern over operator's safety, so they're on the sidewalk with bobcats. And there's a steep slope that drops under the river. And in those sections that don't have either handrail or guardrail, there's been near misses where operators have tipped and gotten posted or rolling themselves, so they're going into the river.
No way, okay.
So that's why it's this section.
Yeah, okay, that is a great answer, by the way.
All right.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with our Dura Group Incorporated for twenty-twenty-four on-call transportation engineering services.
Second. Hey, yeah, yeah. It's seconded by Clint, yeah, by Arthur Shane.
That wouldn't be trying hard.
He's louder and he's closer, so. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passage unanimously. Next one is another professional services agreement, this time for utility engineering, Andy.
So all of the same things that I said about the previous contract apply here with the exception of utilities. So R H two is selected to be the on-call utility engineer, but again, all the, all the same qualifications, staff, task authorizations, uh, et cetera. So this is the bulk of our divisions would be facilitated by this, but water, sewer, sewer water. And then, and you have our water treatment plant, wastewater treatment tanks, et cetera, all fall under the realm of utility improvement. So again, basically the projects that we're intending for them to help us out.
Any other questions? entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with R H two Engineering Incorporated for twenty-twenty-four on-call utility engineering services.
Second. I would have been so disappointed if it wouldn't have gotten uncontested. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passage unanimously. Moving on to reports, Jerry.
I would like to also just mention here, Public Works Week. It, it was just kind of glossed, crammed into something else we voted for in the uh, agenda, and I think it's important that people realize that May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth is Public Works Week.
Yeah.
Okay, um, on April twenty-fifth, I attended the Upper Valley Quaddick Boosters Meeting. On uh, the twenty-seventh, uh, rake the old cemetery event on North, North Road. The Upper Valley Historical Society and Greater Leavenworth Museum team with Sabrina Westbrook and Hudson Bill to organize the vet, this event every six months. The al- Alpine, Alpine, the alb horns played during the time that we were raking and picking up um uh, litter and whatever else, um, pulling weeds and things. And it was, at first I kind of thought it was playing while we're up there working. But you know, they played songs like Amazing Grace and those kinds of songs, and it just fit what we were doing. It was a very peaceful um afternoon. I had a young man that was, um, I think he was twelve, and he was, um, Boy Scout or whichever level that your twelve-year-olds are. And um, I think he thought he was coming to do something else.
Oh, right.
And so he helped me anyway, and um, so I got him interested in uh, trying to figure out how long a certain grave had been here and how old the people were. And so, but um, he was earning volunteer hours for his scout trip. Um, and um, uh, lunch was served from Dan's, and if you weren't there, you missed a great day. Was anybody here? And I missed them being there, were there, Zeke?
I wasn't there, I wasn't here.
Um, it, it, you know, if you ever have a chance to do it, it's every six months, and it's a very fulfilling experience. On May first, I attended the Planning Commission Meeting. Um, Lilith will give that report if she's still there. And um, on the second, the Chumstick Wildfire Steering Committee sponsored a absolutely fantastic spring town hall meeting. Um, we should have all been there. Um, the, the guy who spoke, Sean Norman, was incredible keynote speaker. We also heard, um, you know, some of the calls that came in from different uh, groups that were fighting the fires in that area. We heard the actual calls. So it was a different experience than I've ever had being in a town meeting and um, where some people would, would just would park their cars all over in a road. And the people coming behind him had to get out of their cars and run because they couldn't get there. And he put, um, I don't know how many people um, in a, I think it was Save Mart, a building that was somewhere, and he put them all in there. And they were folks that could not get there by themselves. They were in wheelchairs or had to be carried. It was amazing. I wish every, everybody in this community had been there. And then, um, and um, the acts of heroism performed by the firefighters that he told us. I mean, it's a surprise that the firefighters made it out of their life, let alone to anybody else. And um, I actually had an aunt and uncle and a cousin that lived in um, Paradise. And they had to run for their lives. And although my aunt and uncle are not still a, amongst the living, my cousin and his wife and their family moved back to Paradise, and so they're still there. Um, afterwards, there, what, the evening was concluded with a moderated panel discussion and Bob Ubert um, Bogert was the fellow that ran that. On the sixth, I attended the Upper Valley Historical Society, Greater Leavenworth Museum, where I am the city's representative. On May seventh, attended the city's engagement night at the Fest Hall. And as usual, it seemed like we had lots of people there getting information. It's so important. I mean, they're getting information from the person that can actually answer it right there on the spot. They know what they're talking about, that's their thing. So um, they're always fun to go to. On the eighth, I attended Women's Exchange Lunch, and where we had a local um, author speak about books she had written. And then um, I attended the special P R S A meeting on the ninth. I'll give that to Shane. Well, you weren't there at that one. Oh, gosh.
Sorry.
We were, yeah, I left my little thingy, you know, um, I thought I was doing such a special thing here for you, Shane. Um, they were planning the, um, what they were going to do and have on hand at the um. It uh, engagement night, set up a table and. I'm trying to get the information out about voting for the um, levy for the passage of the levy because. If and uh, it said at the time where it can pass. And um, and then if it doesn't, there's still another chance for it to pass. And if it doesn't, the pool will not open next year. And um, right now it's, um, I'll let Tom tell us where the pool is. And then on the eleventh, um, I rode in the, um, whoop, I missed one, I missed one thing. I went to the Apple Blossom Parade. Um, the the Make Your Wish Foundation had an entry in the parade. And as I have a, um, one of my five-year-old great-grandsons, Lucas Lionheart is a Make Your Wish kid. And so we went down and sat him the pouring rain, boots full of water, pockets full of water. And um, was, uh, I'm so glad we went though, because when he, he, they were down the road coming up, as soon as he saw us, he took off. Running and had to give all of the big, and so it was a, it was a fun thing to share with him. And then on the eleventh, I rode in a horse-drawn carriage with the past royal ladies in the May Fest Parade. And here I am enjoying the study session and council meeting. Thank you for listening.
Over the parade. It was a pretty cool thing that you got, that you were a part of that and the carriage. How many of you were in the past, um?
Royal lady.
Royal ladies, were there four or five?
There were four of us in uh, the wagon.
Yeah.
And um, a couple of people walked. And um, and that's kind of a special time because I know the council has their being in it and there's the royal ladies. So I go with the royal ladies.
That was really cool.
What's the minimum age requirement, fifty?
Supposed to be fifty, yeah.
Yeah.
Or older, or in my case, much.
I think that's great.
All right, thank you. Clint.
Uh, on May third, I had the pleasure of emceeing the Solid Foundations event with uh, with Ali Ben. I'll let our mayor talk a little bit more about that since his efforts were so integral and success of the. Of the, of the program, but it was wildly successful. Um, I believe men raised uh, on the end of around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Wow.
On that night, a lot of it due to thanks from a match from the Sleeping Lady Foundation. So um, I'll let Carl tell more about that, but it was a. It was. Wildly successful and inspirational, I think. Um, I too was there at the beginning of the Chumstick Wildfire Stewardship Coalition's. Uh, event out at Sleeping Lady. I had to leave before the fire chief from Paradise talked about, I'd heard all good things about it and it's. I'd heard a ton about what he was going to talk about, so I'm glad that it hit home. Um. And uh. Back to my report, thank you very much.
All right, Dan.
No report.
Zeke. Um, so the week of April twenty ninth through May first, I was actually out of town for a change. I was up at uh, volunteering up at Holden Village. So I missed a lot of big action, yeah. On the twenty fifth of April, uh, we had a housing advisory committee. Um, and what sticks in my mind is that we, we did consider a letter to Representative Seal. We're kind of still working that through just to kind of build support for maybe next year's. Funding for uh, affordable housing from the city and the county. And he plays a role there. We just want to kind of include him in the loop, but we haven't sent a letter yet. The other thing we did, we talked about a variety of issues. Uh, coming up on our meeting. Um. The last Thursday of this month is we're inviting a land developer, actually it's Jordan McDevitt, to talk to us about. The issues of development and the incentives of that. And we also hope to plan to find um. Contractor, uh, which Justin, forget his last name, he's the uh, he's the uh, chair of the committee, has made a contact. So we're getting some good information from people in the construction business, speak to us about issues that they deal with. Um, then. Um, we have our finance committee meeting coming up this Thursday. Um, with Shane and myself and um, Ron if she makes it. And then I also attended the engagement night, which I found was very successful and fifteen or seventeen booths. I mean, that was really. A lot of information you could find out that was just like, I only hit about five of them and it's kind of hit overload, but it was like. Uh, great information on night and I thought extremely valuable, well done. So that is the end of my report.
See, can I steal some time before we go to Shane?
Okay.
Yeah, I just, this was the thing I was thinking about and forgotten and he. Mentioned it and I just want to say too, I just want to give a note of thanks to the city staff and administration that worked so hard to put on those community engagement nights. It's really clear that we've achieved almost a flywheel effect with it where. The partner agencies who want to go there and share their information, there's a lot of them and now people know about it. So. While I know that the uh, the amount of people that were at the meeting was probably less than it had been at certain evenings. I saw a lot of engagement between folks who attended and and the partner agencies that were there. Wildly successful, in my opinion, and very, very, very useful. So. I know it takes time to put those on, so thank you very much.
Yeah, kudos.
Thanks Clint, you could have talked longer if I don't have anything to report.
You can report on the PRSA.
It was.
And I'd like to report.
It was I. You were on the video, maybe you didn't see me.
Go ahead.
So let's just go to the community engagement night. Again, kudos to you guys, this is that big break. Uh. Seventeen booths and uh, I made my way around a lot of them. I talked to a lot of people, um. Majority of them are, don't live in the city of Leavenworth, but they come to the community night. So this is, this is important, right? It's, it's kind of our folk community. Um, some of the bear wise, um, guys and uh, had names and the agencies, they were super great and the wolf. Oh. About the wolf and the bears coming into the the state and it's uh. It was pretty cool. Um, and then the UVAP, the former friends of Leavenworth Pool, Fult, are now Upper Valley area pool.
Aquatic boosters.
Aquatic boosters.
So to touch base on that, and then I'll go into the PRSA meeting. Uh, the um. One of the concerns of my, one of my friends in town who lives off a shore street, who uses the pool, she was kind of rude to them when she went to their table.
Oh.
And she's kind of like that anyways. And then speaking with her and developing it, I, she thought that they were like the consultants that were pitching the twenty-five billion dollar huge. They looked dialed in and corporate this UVAP name and like. I said, no, that's not, that's the private funding arm that we talked about that night that needed to come into play. And so. It was interesting that her, her take on that. Um, and that could be isolated, but. To make it on the record, the, this is an important friends of uh, the pool uh, that are, that are out there helping us uh, the PRSA. So in that meeting, um, and like you said, Tom can go into the liner, um, some things that the city reacted, I want to say. Poor Tom even speaks about that. Uh, this, he, he react, the city reacted so quickly to get things moving, the timeline. Of getting this, this pool liner done and in, in the works is, I mean, saved us a week of, of not being open, unoperational, which is a lot. Saved us three weeks. Okay, three weeks, saved us three weeks. So it's really happening really quicker than I even knew from last week. So it's great. Uh, kudos to the city moving fast on that and having the funds prepared, just ready in the arms for these kinds of things. And it just, the system worked perfectly. It was really cool to see. Um, the swim team was having their board meeting simultaneously and they were, they were, they chimed in and we talked to the swim team board. Um, about getting the swim team going and um, when that's going to start and then also uh, with Kelly getting uh. Lifeguards are going to be trained up. We've got some Plan A, B, and C for that. So again, everybody's thinking and everybody's moving things forward instead of sitting on their hands. So kudos everyone. Um, we uh, so we, uh, Mayor and I carpooled down to Roslyn. Um, to an A W C Small City Connector. Um, Clay Allen was represented, Roslyn.
Sunny Side.
Sunny Side. Um, and it was really, it was kind of like fire and film. There were two big presentations. Um. Obviously Paradise had a, an impact uh, on the whole country and particularly small towns and. One of the, one of the presenters was at, in command, in the command uh, at Paradise and. Going through those scenarios, and really our, our session was a lot about, um. And so we, you get, or Mr. Mayor can go deeper into that, but it's um. Kind of what impacts the city, like when it, when it happens and it's a big catastrophic thing and how fastly, fast it happens and who's in charge and making decisions. And the cost of a million dollars a day and as these things go on and I, and you're, we're, we're going to pay the bill and. Talking about FEMA and somebody, which FEMA is now paying more attention to fire and they haven't in the past as much. They're really understanding that this is a real threat and danger around the country. So this is kind of cool. There's a lot of federal funds coming in the next few years. Um, but again, whoever's in charge says, hey, we need a helicopter. Hey, we'll get you a helicopter. It's a million dollars, like, can you get the bill? So it's just kind of that, that, that side of it. Um. And and one of the stories from Paradise was one of the major blockages was somebody in a, a big RV or a trailer, tried to do a U-turn and blocked the road.
Yeah.
And I think that's several people died because this person just didn't, didn't uh, react to the background. So um, the film side of that night was the Washington Film Works, super great uh, presentation. Now I've actually connected with her yesterday on the phone. Um, it's uh, really for small towns in Shalan County. So a neat town in, in city in, in Shalan, for example. Can get funding if somebody does a film production here or television commercial, they can get up to forty percent of their whole production cost paid for, for free from Washington Film Works. It's pretty cool. And even my friend, I talked to her about he rented out the Wenatchee Airport for doing it, the thing and so getting forty percent of those dollars. It's a really cool. Way of using local catering and local talent and somebody holding a boom mic and, and using small cities. And how cool rural kind of things are and rural, rural areas opposed to big cities. Um. And so that was the Washington Film Works. And those were all tax dollars too. That was, it's already slated and it's just kind of free money. They're here to give money to do people using small cities. Uh, people in small cities. Uh, May Fest Parade, Carl and I walked and uh, it's just great.
We had proof.
Yeah. Um, it was, it was really great. I personally, it was a treat, um, in being elected to the city council in this great town and then walking the May Fest Parade next to the mayor and. It's quite a treat. It was really quite, quite a treat. Um, and it was uh, really cool to see all of the visitors join themselves. Um. And that wraps up my personal report.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks Travis.
Everybody's like, oh, that'll down, sorry.
Well, my report be real brief, but again, we went to that small city, A W C Small City Connector. And again, I would just encourage any of you to. When we've got an A W C event like that, to consider going along and just getting a taste of it, even if you just take in one. There's a lot of connecting to a lot of different communities in our area. Um, but anyway, and uh, Travis did a great job of, you know. Talking about kind of the big things that we did. And then just to follow up on the, the mend event and, and you know, that. Uh, all I've got to say is, um, it was so delightful for me to see. The growth of men and the community support from those early days when I did two. Projects that you wouldn't have known they existed. Um. Uh, it's wonderful to see this community really get behind and, and one of the outcomes is going to be, I mean. Just picking up those thirty-one units also enables them to pick up a staff person. To be dedicated to housing, to facilitate more housing. So they're poised themselves again to participate more. And when we get our funding stream, which we will. Uh, um, yeah, that they're, you know, they'll be a great part of them moving forward. But it was so gratifying again to, as somebody who's. Been at it for a while to just see that momentum that's, the city is ripe for, I think. So anyway, that's my report. So I'll be.
Thank you, Mayor. I am proud to report that we had over a hundred and twenty attendees at the May seventh community engagement night. Uh, and that does not include the people who are presenting at the seventeen tables. So as, as Clint said, this thing is growing and that we think it's wonderful. Uh, we only had three city tables. Everything else was, was a partner. So fifteen, fourteen other entities were there that night. Um, so I think we did start a great thing. And the next uh, community engagement event will be the annual block party at the Osborne property on Thursday. August twenty second, so it's not on your calendar, please mark your calendar. Uh, many of the partners who attended May seventh, they've already asked to attend that, um, that event. Uh. Also on May seventh, I submitted a technical correction for the nine hundred and forty thousand dollar community project fund grant. That Congressman Schreier secured for Leavenworth in twenty twenty-two. At that time, it was called a place for Alice. Um, the request was reviewed and approved by Schreier's office. Um, and is to utilize the entire grant award, award for the Osborne Adaptive Reuse Project. Uh, the decision was made due to the fact that men's affordable housing project was fully funded by the state legislature. But the timeline for the Osborne Playground Project, um, if we were going to wait for HUD's approval, then that would derail our existing timeline of construction this summer. Um, and the uncertainty of the future of the indoor pool project. So I do expect it to take several months for this request to wind its way through the federal bureaucracy and I will keep council updated as I learn more. Uh, last week I attended A W C's Labor Management Institute in Yakima in preparation for bargaining with the Teamsters Local. Uh, seven sixty later this year. I've been in contact with uh, Public Employment Relations Commission, Perk Staff about training with the unit advancing negotiations. And the compensation study that's being conducted by Cat Down Associates is on track for delivery in June. Um, Travis touched on the small cities thing. I will say, we, uh, it was my first time in Roslyn and I. And it became apparent that the city does not enjoy the attention it's getting from the release of Northern Exposure on Amazon Prime. I don't want to become Leavenworth with the mantra.
I said, no offense, but. And I said, no, it's taken. We don't want you to be at.
But I, I did watch the pilot episode later that night. It is pretty cool to see them go downtown. You can stay in one spot, see everything. Um, and while I was at L R I in Yakima last week, uh, just by happenstance, I sat down on the kitchen table and um. Two, two seats next to me, I saw the guy's name tag and it said sunny weathers. That's a cool name. City administrator, that's a cool type from Meadow Lake. You had a wildfire. So we spent the lunch discussing that city's experience of wildfire last summer, um, which resulted in the loss of two hundred and fifty homes, fifty of which were in city limits. And the role that the city played during the fire and what their, um, and the role they're playing during recovery efforts. Um, I did learn a lot from him and I invited Sonny and his mayor, Terry Cooper, to attend a future study session. So Ken also can ask directly about their experience and how Leavenworth could become better prepared. Uh, the takeaways are make sure everybody has a go bag and make sure everybody knows the ready, set, go. Um, and really where, uh, where the rubber hits the road for the city is in recovery and we need to be planning for recovery now. Um, we have very little to nothing to do in the middle of the wildfire. Our role is after the wildfire.
That's right.
That's my report.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'll cover which I see.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Um, Tom, if you're still listening, uh, feel free to add to this report. This is kind of a spinoff of the PRSA, so you guys were very aware of the liner. We did, um, very quickly, Tom, I think, was aware in late April. Today is now May fourteenth. We cut the fifty percent down check last week and mailed it to them. And my understanding is they're already ordering what they need and order to start construction. So Tom can give you an update on that if he knows anything more. The total of this came in at twenty-four thousand, four eight five sixty-four. Uh, how we are addressing this is that it's coming out of the existing budget of the reserve fund balance that is set aside for capital. And emergency types of things as well as cash flow. So we're not asking for us to move any money around at this point. The sad part, unfortunate. The sad part, unfortunately, he did hear back from RCO who we were applying for. Was it sixty thousand?
Seventy.
Seventy thousand uh for replacement of a pump that we know is failing at the pool. We're not certain if that pump will make it through this season, so that'll be a second hit potentially. If we run into that failing on us anytime this season. If that does occur, the RCO grant, of course, we did not make it to the second round. There were a lot of great projects and a lot of folks requesting RCO funds. Or just didn't rise to the top with some of the others. I don't know the exact amount of what that pump would be if and when it does come to fruition. If our levy, our imminent levy this year passes, especially if we can pass at a higher rate to the community. We'll definitely have the funds to take care of that before next year's season. But if that levy fails, we'll have to talk to you guys because you hold the bird strings. Of how to manage when we're short in the pool fund. On the annual report front since our last meeting, I have completed the lodging tax annual report. Shirley is nearing completion of the city's financial report and I will be spending. All of next week reviewing all of her work before we finalize and submit that on the deadline of the twenty ninth. And we are also in progress with the Watchdog Annual Street Report. Which I've done my part and the public works teams are reviewing their data and then we'll get that one submitted. Last item under tab twenty, that is your finance committee packet, finance committee. And that is this Thursday, so please do bring that. We will be diving into just the transportation improvement plan, the six year tip. Which Tom will be bringing to you, I believe at the next meeting to talk about changes to that tip. So I'll bring you the existing one. And we'll just go over each project and I'll answer any questions that you have.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just let me know if there's any questions. On the April Public Works Report, I believe it's tab nineteen in the packet. Also, thank you, Mayor Florrie, for the proclamation for National Public Works Week. So what we do here at the City Leavenworth is we honor the Public Works Department. Uh, Kara's going to help us. Similar to last year, we will do a shout out. To each division uh via social media likely and also do some internal shout outs as well, just highlighting work. From the Public Works Department by division. So keep an eye out for that. National Public Works Week is next week and we also will be. Uh, hosting a barbecue for the Public Works staff and that'll be next Wednesday. Uh, big belly cans are deployed throughout the downtown. Uh, they're quite. Advanced from a technologic, technology standpoint, so each can will alert. Uh, staff through the app. If they're full. Um, and so, so far, so far the cans are working out quite well. There is. A concern of just how the cleanliness of the chute of the big belly cans are, especially in the summertime with ice cream. They are going to be susceptible to just. This really dirty sticky, not, not where your hands touch the big belly cans, but the chute that feeds the internal components of the can. So we will likely have to increase. Our efforts in public works just for cleaning, clean the cans. However, still. A savings in labor hours just to the fact that they hold so much capacity. Uh, we received a number of positive remarks at the community engagement night. About the big belly can, so so far, so good on that front. Scrub seal bid opening, the rebid, we opened bids tomorrow, so we've already received one bid so far. It's sealed. We won't open it until after the bid opening time. So at least we have one bid in hand. And, and other news, we took delivery of our vector truck and staff were trained on the vector truck. So. Uh, here in the next couple of weeks, you will see the vector truck out periodically conducting work on the public right away. And lastly, I do want to provide a quick pool update. I know this was talked about at great lengths, but in summary, I was notified on April twenty first. Excuse me, April twenty fourth of the zero depth entry liner failing. And so what happened was water got underneath the plaster. And basically cre- caused the liner to separate from the base. Um, and then on the, the following, so that would have been the twenty fourth was midweek. So the following week on that Monday, we had WMS Aquatics come up. Inspect the pool and then on May first, they gave us a proposal. And you know, it was roughly around twenty, twenty four, twenty five thousand dollars. And so per the city's policy, we need. To solicit at least three informal quotes to proceed with work like that. So uh, that, that costs that amount. So same day, I reached out to over forty contractors on our MRSC roster seeking urgent pool repair cost estimates. And we received zero by the May sixth deadline. So we're fortunate. To have WMS Aquatics even submit a proposal. They've demoed the liner as of yesterday. And so next steps are, we are just. The, the contractor, WMS Aquatics, they're awaiting shipment of the, of the critical materials needed to patch the liner. So until those ma- materials are acquired, I'm hesitant to give an anticipated completion date. However, it is likely that the pool won't open until shortly after Memorial Day at this point. Hopefully, uh, we're hoping for better, better, quicker turnaround, but that's the best information we have at this point. With that. Uh, that concludes my report.
Tom, I have a question. Is there any way to line the big belly cans, like the chute of the big belly cans with? With anything or is that not feasible?
That's a good question, Councilmember Thayer. I'd, I'd have to ask operations staff and gra- and, and gather their opinion on that.
Yeah, like put some plastic, like, I don't know, maybe a film that can, that'll be.
Yeah, yeah.
Or something.
What about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was that? Councilmember Hesper?
Not press and seal from the grocery store. Just stick it right to the edge.
Yeah.
Maybe once a week.
It actually works very well.
It works super well, especially on metal.
I would be surprised if other jurisdictions have deployed these, haven't had similar complaints.
Right. Yeah, Link, Link Transit has. Link Transit has quite a inventory of big belly. Cans, I'm, we, we may reach out to their operations folks and see what they do.
Oh, thanks, Tom. Yeah, just.
I know you guys reached out, obviously, spoke to other municipalities.
No, we, we did. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have the details, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't mention anything about, well, we may have higher standards too, so.
Yeah.
I've got two quick questions. Um, on page two of three, under facilities division, the number, the first one. Place an order for the second round of cyber locks. What is that? Those are the.
That you.
That I use.
Use to get in.
And why a second round are those?
We only bought enough at the first deployment, make sure they worked well for city hall and the festival.
Okay, so you're not replacing the ones that. Okay, my other question is, um, in the parks division on the bottom of two of three. Um, groove graffiti removal conducted at Enchantment Park. Do we not have cameras down there?
We do, we do have cameras at Enchantment Park that points towards the restroom. Um, and a lot of times when we do have video footage, you can't really discern. Who did it? You can't identify. We, we do turn it into the sheriff's office in, in the event that they can't identify somebody.
Okay, because the school got their uh outhouses, what are those things called? Their outhouses. Porta potties tipped over, but they had um cameras. And so they have pictures of the cars and what color they are and kids and they've sent that to the schools to have the school help with identifying.
I also thought I was thinking that was wind.
Kenny Bowman will tell you it's not the wind.
Did you guys get a thicker paint? For the walls?
I need, I'll have to, I'll have to follow up with John on that.
Yeah, yeah. Pick a couple of those.
Oh, you mean you can see through the.
Any others? All right, well.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, thank you, Sharon. The Planning Commission did meet and talked about condo regulations again. Um, we have a nice handout. Um, it was more informational at the PC. And Kara, our communications specialist, I will call her. Uh, she made it look really pretty and we were able to hand that out at the engagement night. And that just talks about some of the main questions related to allowing condos in all residential zones. I will note for your information that uh, Upper Valley Mend is very excited about this option. It. Could give them a lot of potential. Opportunities to expand their housing ownership program if they can condominiumize in residential zones and. And sell those units while retaining the land, which is their current model. So. Uh, we will be having a hearing with the Planning Commission, June fifth. But before that, we were requested by the Residential Coalition of Shalane County Group. To have a discussion on the condominium. Option and that will be a Zoom only meeting on the twenty second. It is on the city calendar if you want to attend at four PM Wednesday. Next week. So hopefully we'll get some good questions and get resolved and answered at that meeting. Uh, Zeke, thank you for your great report on the Housing Advisory Committee. It's quite an engaging group and there's a lot going on there. The bylaws that they uh are operating under will be coming to the city council next week, uh, next meeting. I also want to let you know that we are looking at getting some pre-approved dry raid residential stormwater, right? Plan put together, so we're getting a cost estimate on that and that should help. Encourage more residential development as well. And on a super exciting note, uh, we do have a building official. So if you hadn't heard, we, we did hire a building official. Most of you, I think, might have heard that. But in case he starts on Monday, uh, we're excited to have him on board. Uh, Louis Gonzo- Gonzalez from. Shalane County will be joining the city.
Really?
Yeah.
You stole him from the county?
Yeah.
You stole him from the city of Shalane.
I, I didn't reach out to him. He just stopped by and visited with me about a month and a half ago. And just wanted to talk about how we operate in our department and forms of communication and expectations and. No, so it went really well.
Well played.
Yeah, way to go.
Well played.
He's well experienced, so. Move forward.
Nice.
Okay, that's it. Thank you all.
Great. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Sharon.
FBI, you're right, Tom.